Silence. You're fired. All right, and now I'll pass it over to Councilmember Freeman for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand to salute the flag. Say the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of God, which stands on a nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
And it's Member Baker.
Here.
And it's Member Cardiero.
Here.
And it's Member Cook.
Here.
And it's Member Freeman.
What's it?
And it's Member Rist.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a few ceremonial items tonight. And we'll start with our Parks and Rec. Director Walcutt. All right, I have the honor of reading our Durham Parks and Recreation Centennial Celebration. Today, we proclaim, whereas on April 28th, 1924, a Durham City Council Resolution recognized public recreations stating playgrounds are essential to proper growth and citizenship. For a century, Durham Parks and Recreation has been integral to the city of Durham, connecting the whole community to wellness, the outdoors, and lifelong learning. And whereas 2024 marks the 100-year anniversary of public recreation in Durham, celebrating Durham and Durham Parks and Recreation's history while creating a vision of the future that prioritizes accessibility, inclusiveness, and innovation for all. And whereas DPR advocates for health and wellness, providing opportunities for physical activity, mental rejuvenation, and overall well-being. And whereas DPR is a steward of natural resources promoting environmental conservation, exploration, and appreciation of the beauty of nature. And whereas DPR has demonstrated commitment to social equity, ensuring all individuals, regardless of circumstance or ability, have equitable access to recreation and park resources. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2024, as Durham Parks and Recreation's Centennial Celebration in Durham, and let us honor Durham Parks and Rec for a century of service to our community, recognize its history, embrace its future, and reaffirm commitment to nurturing a vibrant community for generations to come. So witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 15th day of April, 2024. Yes, share remarks.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, and Manager Page. On behalf of my current team that's here, and all of DPR, and of course, all the past DPR team members, we stand on their shoulders and their legacy, and we're grateful for all their years of public service. I would just say, history is a great teacher, and even though 100 years is a lot of years, we recognize that we have a lot of room to grow still, and we recognize that this centennial celebration is not a finish line, but we're just getting started. So appreciate it. Thank you.
They're being modest. Let's give them a hand. I'm still up here. This was, an oversight, I tried to pass it out. Sorry, guys. All right, the next one is our National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. There she is. Welcome, welcome. Entourage. Paola. Do you mind holding that so she can get a picture too? All right, also proclaiming, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical services, or Durham Community Safety Heart. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, paramedics, firefighters, and heart is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, since the safety of our police officers, paramedics, firefighters, and heart is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from residents and visitors who telephone the Durham Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety communications officers and call takers are the first first responders, and most critical contact our residents and visitors have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety communications officers and call takers are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and heart by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety communications officers and call takers of the Durham Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, treatment of patients, mental health prevention, and intervention. And whereas, each public safety communications officer and call taker has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 14th through April 20th, 24, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Durham, and hereby urge all residents and visitors to take special note of this observance in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city safe. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 15th day of April, 2024. And before I pass over the mic, I know that I mean you all's records quite a bit, because I see quite a bit, and I don't mind calling on our 911 center for support. There was a situation recently, and you, I was losing my mind on the phone. I don't know who I was talking to, but thank you for keeping me calm. Thank you. I just, in the craziest of situations, it's amazing how professional they are. And I even said at one point, because I didn't disclose who I was, but at one point I was like, "I'm the mayor, and I'm asking you to get somebody here, quick!" Sir, it's okay. Just keep calm, and they're on the way. So, thank you all. It takes a lot of training, I'm sure. Better than me, I couldn't do it. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. Yes, on behalf of Durham Emergency Communications Department, we just want to say thank you for this special acknowledgement. I personally entered into this profession with helping others in mind, from a non-emergency situation to an emergency situation. Knowing that I've done my best with assisting someone and getting them the help they need gives me the assurance and the confidence that being a telecommunicator is the job for me. So we as telecommunicators, we strive daily as the first first responders to service the residents and visitors of Durham with respect, compassion, and professionalism. Thank you.
That 911 call taker was probably like, "Sure, you're the mayor." My thanks to his honor for this great privilege to read this next proclamation. It's a night for heroes here tonight, and I want to thank my mayor for doing me this solid, because he knows what a fan of firefighters I am, particularly of fire trucks. Anyone who comes into any one of my offices, you'll see a fire truck sitting on my shelf in my offices. I, when I ran for city council, I thought that as a council member, you could just go in and get to drive a fire truck if you wanted. They have these things about rules and people getting hurt and training, so you can't do it. So I said, "What am I going to do with the rest of the three years and 11 months I have left on council?" But I am so pleased to present this proclamation to our firefighters for 2024 firefighters. And I'm going to ask Chief Zoldos and his comrades to come forward, members of the command staff, firefighters that are with him tonight. Step up, gentlemen. Growing up, we called the police the finest, and we called our firefighters the bravest. So it's my honor, Mr. Mayor and council members, to read this proclamation for our bravest. Whereas, the firefighters of the Durham Fire Department are essential to providing a safe community in which to live, work, and play. And whereas, in 2023, our firefighters responded to 32,771 calls for service, which required 74,280 individual apparatus responses. And whereas, Bull City's bravest, our Durham firefighters, protect our city and respond to fires, emergency medical service calls, technical rescue incidents, hazardous materials emergencies. Whereas, May the 4th is considered around the world as International Firefighters' Day. And whereas, the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation created Light the Night for fallen firefighters to recognize the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend, which this year occurs May 4th and 5th. And whereas, all Durham fire stations will be participating in the Light of Night for fallen firefighters by displaying red lights throughout May 4th and 5th. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2024, as Firefighters' Day in Durham, and hereby urge all residents, businesses, and organizations to take note of and participate in this observance by displaying red lights in honor of our fallen firefighters on the evenings of May 4th and 5th, 2024. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 15th day of April, 2024. Signed, Leonardo Williams, Mayor, City of Durham. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council. My name is Bob Zoldis, and I have the privilege of serving as your fire chief. With me tonight, I have two members who have great significance to the Durham Fire Department and the city of Durham. I have our most senior and our most junior member of the department with me tonight. Our department's most senior member, to my right, Fire Driver Gray Holloman. Gray graduated on July 10, 1986, from Academy Number Two, and is our longest-serving member. He was designated as a department senior member in 2020 and represents us well today in that role. Fire Driver Holloman is assigned to Ladder Company Number Three, which is quartered at 822 North Miami Boulevard. Now on my left, and I'm sure frightened to be here tonight, is firefighter Gustavo Lopez. Gustavo graduated on April 12, last Friday, from our academy, Academy 37. Fighter Lopez graduated with 25 other new firefighters this past Friday, and while they're all, if you'd say equally junior, I asked Gustavo specifically to represent our newest members, because he was picked by his peers for the Fully Involved Award, which meant that he had the most all-in attitude and all-out effort and would represent them the best. Fighter Lopez is assigned to Engine Company Number Two, which is quartered at 1,001 Ninth Street. Thank you very much for recognizing the great work of your firefighters tonight. The officers and members of the Durham Fire Department protect the lives, property, and environment of our city 24/7/365. Your fire department does that by responding to fires, medical emergencies, auto accidents, hazardous materials events, technical rescue entrapments, and all manners of incidents that require lifesaving and caring skills. We are called to help, as was just mentioned, over 32,000 times this past year alone, and we answer that call every single time. Your fire department additionally works very hard to prevent the 911 call from ever happening in the first place through strong public education efforts and solid code enforcement. Lastly, thank you for asking all of all residents, businesses, and organizations to display red lights, May 4 and 5. Those nights, I'm sorry, each year approximately 100 firefighters die in the line of duty across the United States, and they are memorialized in the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Emmitsburg, Maryland. This year, that ceremony will take place on May 4, and one of Bull City's bravest, one of our own, will be enshrined there on that day. On behalf of the 447 men and women of the fire department, thank you all very much for this kind and thoughtful recognition of their strong work. Thank you.
Good evening. I am presenting the Black Maternal Health Week proclamation to Ms. Joyce Spencer, Executive Director of Equity Before Birth. And before I start, I would like to appreciate our firefighters as well, and I want to make sure that I state very clearly, it's going to be important to make sure they get paid. Whereas, the maternal mortality rate in North Carolina doubled between 2019 and 2021, exacerbated by the global pandemic, and one in four babies born in Durham are birthed to black women. And whereas, black women nationwide, regardless of income or education level, or are three to four times more likely to die from preventable pregnancy-related complications. And whereas, research demonstrates that the services of diverse birth workers, health advocates, community organizations, and healthcare providers are a critical component of eliminating disparities, enhancing black maternal health, safety, and improving birth and health outcomes. And whereas, we recognize and uplift community-based responses to addressing this crisis, and we promote initiatives that reduce black maternal morbidity and mortality, such as doula services, midwifery services, peer support, mutual aid, and mental wellness supports. And whereas, black women deserve to have beautiful, safe pregnancies and birth experiences with access to care of their choice through being empowered and resources to make informed decisions based on their needs. And whereas, Black Maternal Health Week was founded by the Black Mamas Matter Alliance to increase awareness around the state of black maternal health and promote activism and investment, and solutions, attention, and action are needed to improve black maternal health outcomes in Durham and across the North Carolina. And now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 11 through April 17, 2024, Black Maternal Health Week in Durham, North Carolina, and hereby urge all residents and visitors to take special note of this observance in support of reducing black maternal morbidity and increasing awareness and health outcomes. Witness my hand in corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the 15th day of April, 2024. Before I turn it over, I would like to say that I really have, I've never met my grandmother because she died in childbirth when my mom was 12. And I really hold this proclamation and these words deep in my heart in understanding that our black women in this community need the support of you all. This week is just one week, but it's throughout the year, in coming years, as they go through their birthing processes. People don't understand how early in the pregnancy is when, you know, you're experiencing the most life-threatening parts and pieces of this, and I just want to make sure that I do highlight that we have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you so much to the City of Durham, to city council, to Mayor Williams for issuing this proclamation. Really quickly, just wanted to remind everyone that it's racism and not race that is the cause of these disparities. The history in our country and in our healthcare system has created, unfortunately, a system where often women of color, indigenous women, black women are ignored. The CDC reminds us that 84.1% of these deaths are preventable, which means this is an experience that we don't have to endure at all, and it can be fixed. And so I'm really appreciative for this proclamation, because it reminds us to do what we can to fix it. I spent the weekend in wonderful celebration. Equity Before Birth had a dance party. Mamay had their inaugural Black Maternal Health Walk, Run, and Stroll. I saw many of our community members come out, grandparents, teen parents, babies, couples, caregivers, and so I really appreciate that, and I ask us to keep it going. We're not the first to do this work. We won't be the last, so I appreciate everyone who came before us and opened the door. I'm looking forward to all the doors that we will open for the generations that come behind us. A lot of people ask, you know, "Well, what can I do?" Be kind, care for people, check on the folks that you know that may be pregnant or have an infant. Ask them if they've showered. Make a meal for them. Make space for them. Offer to babysit. Send a kind note. Remind them that they are enough, that they are being wonderful parents and caregivers. There is a role that we can all play. I really appreciate Councilmember Adriana Freeman. She has had unravering support from day one, so thank you too for showing up in community all the time, always lending and opening ear. We've had numerous conversations about her personal connection to this work. But there is something that we can all do, and we know that when we lift disparities from the bottom up, it kind of gives the whole entire system a facelift, and outcomes will improve for everyone. So thank you all so, so much for this proclamation, and let's continue to work.
Dr. Wanda Boone wants to join up here. This is the final proclamation of the night for Alcohol Awareness Month. Whereas, Alcohol Awareness Month is a national public health awareness campaign created with an aim of raising awareness to understand the causes and treatment available for what is leading national health issue. And whereas, Alcohol Awareness Month aims to reduce the social stigma associated with alcohol use disorder, or AUD, to educate people on how the disease can be addressed and offer help and advice for individuals and families living with AUD. Whereas, according to the 2019 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, nearly 15 million people ages 12 and older had AUD, and an estimated 414,000 adolescents ages 12 to 17 had AUD. 4.2 million people ages 12 to 20 reported binge drinking. Whereas, according to the Durham County Youth Behavior Risk Survey, there has been a decrease in alcohol use among middle school and high school students from 2007 to 2021. Middle school, 2007, 20%, 2015, 30%, 2021, 16%. High school, 2007, 29%, 2015, 35%, 2021, 15%. Whereas, according to the NC Injury and Violence Prevention Branch, the 60% overdose emergency room visits among black residents in Durham was due to the combination of alcohol and opioids. And whereas, individuals and families have experienced increased stress due to the prolonged trauma of the pandemic, leading to increased use of alcohol, with some individuals engaged in alcohol misuse and some subsequently developing AUD. And there should be no shame or blame placed on individuals and families struggling with an AUD. Therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April, 2024, as Alcohol Awareness Month in Durham, and hereby urge all residents and visitors to take special note of this observance in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city safe. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 15th day of April, 2024.
Thank you, everyone. I'm not a stranger to this work. I'm proud to say that the data regarding young people is going down in terms of alcohol use, in terms of tobacco. Marijuana, we're still working on. But I'm so proud of the young people, college-age students that are working with us. They're really at the forefront of this work. They're the ones that make the difference. Over the weekend, I was on TV, I don't know how many times, maybe four times, reaching over 5 million people, joined with the Talk It Out campaign, which is a North Carolina campaign. But the influence that we have had in Durham due to our coalition and collaborative work, to me, is something to be very proud of. There are individuals and organizations around the state, around the nation, and including some international individuals and organizations, that are asking us to help them to find solutions to the problems associated with substance use. I'm proud of that, not just for my organization, but for Durham itself. And so there are people who are watching. I don't know if there's anyone here with our organization, but my husband Earl is there. And then we have two other representatives. Thank you so much for everything you do in the city, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council, for all that you are doing. Lastly, we've been mentoring young people since 2010. We don't let them go. We stay with them as long as they want to stay with us, and we are seeing a generational improvement in what's happening in Durham. So again, thank you so much for the proclamation.
I remember when you all started in 2010, and I was the band director at Southern Durham High School, and you all came out and we did a commercial onstage. So thank you for your work since then. All right, at this time, I will move to announcements about All right, at this time, I will move to announcements by council. Normally, we don't have that many celebratory events in the beginning, but it's always good. It's always good. So Councilmember Cook.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So a week from tonight starts Pesach, which is Passover, my very favorite holiday for so many reasons, but most importantly, because I value how it requires us Jews to sit and really reflect on our own history as folks who were enslaved, whose movement was restricted, who were displaced. It also allows us time to really critically think about people who are suffering today from oppression and other forms of slavery, and what we can do to alleviate that suffering. You must be friend of the stranger, we are told, for you were once a stranger in Mizraim, the narrow place. Today marks 191 days of genocide in Palestine. Over 3,000 to 3,000 people have died, including more than 13,800 children. That's over 40% of that death toll. Today also marks a global protest for Gaza and major cities all across the world. Industries have ground to a halt. We are having this meeting tonight, of course. I think that it is our duty to have this meeting, but I think it's also important to recognize that that protest is ongoing. Here in Durham, just in the last few days, five people were shot in at least three different locations, including one 16-year-old boy who was killed. We're witnessing so much suffering, and we're having to mourn both worldwide and in our Two months ago, this body passed a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. I'm really proud of that work. I'm proud that we joined over 100 other municipalities in this country, recognizing the right of Palestinians to exist, to have remembered histories, to have the possibility of future. But I'm also pained because despite a majority of people in this country calling for a ceasefire, we have seen the U.S. enablement of this genocide to the point where Israel's unchecked and intentional escalation has led to regional instability and continues to endanger us all. As we move into this period of recalling the liberation of the Jews from Mizraim, and on this day of mass protest, and in increasing fear and mourning, I want to reiterate again the interconnectedness of all people on this earth and my dedication to a Durham and a broader world where every person has the right and ability to live with dignity, autonomy, and respect, free from systematic violence that is perpetrated with guns, with fists, with bombs, with starvation, with lack of affordable housing. We have a lot of work to do on this council overall, but also this week. I hope to continue seeing community engagement in this space as we talk through everything from employee pay to waterworks, all of those things coming up on Thursday. Please stay tuned. Stay through the meeting. Come on Thursday. Join us for our work session. Watch online, but most importantly, keep looking out for each other. Thank you so much, Chag Sameach, for those celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but I just wanted to speak up in support and thank my fellow councilmember for speaking out on the issues that you raised about the genocide in Gaza, as well as making that connection with the local, because we are not detached from what happens globally. We're not detached from what happens at the federal level. We suffer from poor gun policies at the federal level right here in Durham. We see the impacts of that every single day. And you referenced the shootings that took place last week, including the one that tragically killed a 16-year-old. And we have to deal with those consequences every single day and do the very best that we can while continuing to push for better policies at higher levels of government. As we saw, there was a lot to celebrate. There are also sometimes we want to talk about some of the challenges that we face. So those are some. And I also wanted to acknowledge the bomb threat that was placed at the main library, the Durham County Main Library, last week, targeting an LGBTQ+ event. I stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ+ community, as well as all of our residents. And I know for a fact, without having checked with folks up here, we all stand with the LGBTQ+ community and everyone who's being intimidated. And we won't allow people to be intimidated. We're going to stand with our residents and with our constituents, and we won't allow voices to be silenced. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Javier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for their remarks. And last week, towards the end of the week, was a very hard week for Durham. I do, I'm going to shift a little bit. I do want to thank Durham Parks and Rec. Today was the opening of the Senior Games. Councilmember Rist did a great job as the recreational advisory commission appointee or liaison as councilmember, opening him up. And I wanted to shout out, I think I'm pronouncing her name correctly, Fleta Hatch. She was the presenter of The Torch. She was, is 100 years young, and it was pretty incredible to see somebody with so much joy and energy, and I think is a testament to how we should all, how we should all live. Additionally, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor. The State of the City last week was excellent, I think, really highlighted some of the things we're working on as a council and some of his initiatives. And I have to say, I was a little bit of a, oh, why do we have to do it somewhere else? And I was very happily surprised at how much fun I had. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I want to echo my colleagues' support in just acknowledging all of the hardships that folks are facing right now and encouraging everyone to be kinder and slower with one another. I did want to just share that I had the opportunity to visit or to be a part of the grand opening for the North Durham Farmers Market, which is at Soul Sanctuary at 16 Old Oxford Road. And I do want to say that it's kind of a moment of acknowledging just how far Bragg Town has traveled or come in this work, and just acknowledging the way in which community can rise up and do what needs to be done when you allow them to without, you know, developing over top of them. I will also add that I had the opportunity to be a part of the grand opening for the East Durham Farmers, East Durham Market on Driver Street. And just knowing that this food swamp, which lacked a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables, now have the access to fresh fruits and vegetables for the neighborhood, and I'm excited about what comes next. And so, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Rist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, Mayor Protem, city manager, staff, residents here. I want to thank my colleagues, first of all, for lifting up both the celebrations we've experienced here today, but also recognizing that it's been a rough several days since late last week in the Bull City. So I share your concerns. I as well was devastated by the five people shot in the course of a couple hours. Horrific. And again, it reminds us that violence is too prevalent in our lives, that tragic gun violence is too much a part of the Bull City and elsewhere, and we need to keep working to address that. I do want to appreciate the Police Chief Andrews, who gave a press conference at 11 on Friday, was able to participate along with the mayor. Her comments that were right on, expressing both her devastation at the events that happened, also representing or reflecting that her officers were also tired and worn out from an awful day. At the same time, the chief lifted up the fact that their commitment to this work and providing safety in Durham is unwavering, and I really appreciate that ongoing commitment on the part of the chief and her staff. As somewhat of a coincidence, I did a ride-along on Friday evening that was planned several weeks in advance. So I want to thank Sheriff, I'm sorry, Chief Andrews again and her colleagues for arranging that. Deputy City Manager Beau Ferguson as well for arranging that. And I want to thank especially Officer Green, who was incredibly kind and patient to take me along from 11 to 12 on Friday evening, answer all my basic questions about the work of police, the work they do. He was both informative, polite, kind to me, but also incredibly, as a young man, a young officer, incredibly passionate about his work, incredibly well-trained in what he's doing, and incredibly passionate about the role of public service. So I just want to lift up all the officers in our department, the work that the chief and others have done to provide that kind of support for our community from officers who really believe deeply in their work and are passionate and are well-skilled in what they're doing. So I want to thank the chief and her colleagues for that. On a somewhat lighter note, I also had the chance of participating on Sunday in the Tri-Tennis training at North Gate Park. I think my colleagues have all been seeing the emails from the tennis community about the state and the condition of public tennis courts in Durham. I'm a member of the tennis community, so I was glad to go out on Sunday and to see the programming that our Parks and Rec provides for people who are just starting out with tennis. It also did give me a chance to look at those courts and get a sense of what's the quality of our tennis courts and how we can work together as a council, as a city, to continue improving those courts, along with everything else we do at Parks and Rec. I also want to thank the North County Tennis Association, which provides support for the Tri-Tennis program, along with the United States Tennis Association. I also want to thank Susan Graff, who's the coordinator of the Tri-Tennis program, and Javier Pabon, who's the tennis coach of Tri-Tennis. Great coach. And so in closing, I just want to say to the folks who were part of that class that I participated in, remember to like, watch your feet, right? Remember your stance, and remember your strike point of the ball. So keep up the good work and continue your tennis careers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. Again, to you and to my colleagues, everyone in the chamber, everyone watching, whatever platform you may be watching. Mr. Mayor, I want to associate myself with congratulations to you for a wonderful State of the City address. I think it was a transformative, paradigm-shifting State of the City address, and I thought it was well-received, well-organized. I also want to congratulate the staff, who does a great job in making us look good. When we look bad, it's our fault. When we look good, it's the staff's fault, who did a great job in pulling off that wonderful event. Great energy, and I think a great message for what we need to be focused on as a city. So congratulations to you on that. I want to, and I know, Mayor, you already have, extend my deepest condolences to the family of the young baby that was killed in our city last week and the families who were affected by gunfire. I also want to give voice to the many people I've heard from who actually live in the areas affected by gunfire, who sometimes feel that we're a bit condescending, that we speak as if we're in their place when we aren't. Those of us who are in a position, not only in some instances to pass resolutions, but in other instances to pass policy, to actually do something as a government, do things that comport with our values, do things that not only cheer for our police, but give them the tools to be more effective in dealing with this stuff over and over and over again. We've been talking about this for a long time. Washington's going to be Washington. That's baked in. Raleigh's going to be Raleigh. That's baked in. The question is, what will we do as people with power, as people that can actually affect dollars moving, levers being pulled, and buttons being pushed at the local level? So to those residents who tonight will hear gunfire, some of it will be reported, some of it won't, to those residents, the heart of this city continues to beat with you. It beats for our children, for our babies, and they are babies, which means that any indictment, any critique, doesn't go to them, it goes to us, the big folk, the grown folk, the people who are parents, the people who have powers, the people who are mentors. It's an editorial on us. And as long as we keep hearing these reports, as long as there's gunfire each night less than two miles from our city center, there will have to be an asterisk on all of the great things that are going on in Durham. And there are great things going on in Durham. It's no doubt. We've drunk the Kool-Aid. Durham is dope. It is. But our celebrations will continue to be muted. It will continue to have an asterisk next to it, as long as less than two miles from our city center, babies are jumping in bathtubs when it's not bath time because of gunfire in our city. So we'll continue to send our condolences and our best wishes, but I'm going to continue to push, I know with others, that we also do everything we can, everything we can that comports with our values, policy-wise, to address this scourge that's affecting our city, this cancer that is affecting our city. May God bless their families. May God bless the memory of that baby. May God bless Durham. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, colleagues. As many of you all have stated already, we, this was a tough week. And for me personally, it was super high and super low. State of the City was a huge success. Even went viral. Everyone's talking about it, even in other states. So exciting. And we, you know, I really wanted to highlight, you know, what's so exciting about our community. Yeah, we have our challenges, but we can't overcome those challenges unless we, you know, know that we have the ability to generate the resources and camaraderie and community to overcome those challenges. So I wanted to really highlight that. And, you know, just the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people that came, I want to shout out the youth entrepreneurs from Echo. I want to shout out the youth civic leaders from Hillside. I want to shout out the Durham Divas, the senior citizen cheerleader squad. And I'm going to start posting the pictures from the evening, but they rock. Age is nothing but a number. I think they're all liars, talking about 80 years old, 83 years old, 75. No, no way. I want to thank the John Brown Jazz Quintet. I want to thank the Durham Symphony and Orchestra Quintet. I want to thank, where I was drum major, head drum major of the NCCU Sound Machine, for taking part. I want to thank our poet laureate. I want to thank ABC 11 and Joel Brown for being the emcee. And everyone, everyone, everyone who came out. What an amazing evening. However, two days later, I was in Rocky Mount at a leadership forum for Duke University, the North Carolina Leadership Forum, sponsored by Duke. And as I was sitting in the audience, in the room, we were having dinner, and I was listening to a panelist, and this panelist had a particular bias, I'll just say. And they were talking about these large cities that are full of thugs and criminals and crips and thugs and bloods, and that's why, you know, they don't have that mess in rural North Carolina. I raised my hand to speak, but then I got a phone call and I had to lower my hand. And I stepped out, and it was the city manager. And she said, Mayor, you haven't responded, so I thought I'd give you a call. I didn't have my other phone. And she explained to me what happened, and all I could say was, Jesus Christ. I can't really explain the feeling that I had at that moment, because I went into that dinner on a high, feeling so good. And then I adopted this anger based on what this person on the panel was saying. And then I get this phone call. And there was a mixture of, is he right? No, he's not right. We know what we need to do. And we know what we need to do for our youth. We know the paths in which they need to be on. The answer is right before us. We got off the phone, I go back inside, and I did raise my hand, and I said, hey, just for the record, I'm the mayor of Durham. He had the audacity to say, well, you know what I'm talking about. I said, actually, you know, considering we're in Rocky Mount, and you are of a particular position in this area, let me tell you where I'm from. And it's a shame that where I'm from, we say, oh, you made it out. Let's not get it twisted. There are challenges everywhere. And when we pit these things against each other, it does not help us. But when we hold hands as a community, that is when we're stronger. And I told him, I said, I'm willing to hold your hand if you will open your mind, because it'll make both of us better. I ended that forum early, and I came back to Durham to stand next to our chief and support the work that they are doing. Still a mixed bag of feelings, because I know that we have the capability of all places in this entire world where we have the ability to do something tangible is right here in Durham. And this is where my energy will be. There are challenges everywhere, and the love that we generate for one another right here can work here, it can work nationwide, it can work abroad, but we must do it. We can disagree. We can disagree, but we must try, period. That 16-year-old boy that died, it was his twin brother who was shot the week before. And unfortunately, this is a very common thing in some of our communities across our And I just want every community in our city to actually care. And I know people care, but we have to care through action. So there are folks that are saying, "Yeah, so after these shootings, is Durham really dope?" Yes, they are. Yes, we are. And I'll tell you why. Soon, you're going to see me wearing a T-shirt that says Durham is dope, and I'm going to provide you the opportunity to buy that T-shirt. And 100% of those proceeds are going to go right into a fund where you will get to actually have, mentor organizations will be able to pull from that fund, and you, as individuals, will be able to invest, whether it's 15, 20, 100, 1,000, whatever, right back into your own community. It doesn't take a vote, it doesn't take a resolution, it doesn't take anything, it just takes you to give a dang. And that's just the first. We're about to get really creative, and we're going to stop watching kids die and say, "Oh, this is really unfortunate," and move on. So I'm not taking excuses. I'm not taking workarounds, and I'm not taking any nice language. We have work to do. And the way we respond to this, which I know will be successful, is why Durham is so freaking And with that, I want to shout out someone who's dope. Her name is Tammy Moore, Chef Tam. I was driving on Fayetteville Street today, past WD, I just wanted to personally connect to the areas where these shootings happened. In this location, right by WD Hill, as I'm driving by, there is someone that is wild enough to set up a table, and they do this every weekend. They set up a table and just started cooking breakfast for the entire community. No judgment. People that are hooked on drugs, people that are coming from church, everybody. And they were all there together. She was wild enough to love hard. I pulled my car over, and I went over, they didn't know who I was, I just said, "Hey, guys, hey, I just want to come and say thank you, because this is what community looks And I think someone said, "Hey, I saw that dude on TV." And I said, "Yeah, I'm Mayor Williams." "Oh, it's Mayor Williams." And we, actually, I was headed somewhere, but I actually just took a moment to just hang out. I stayed out there for like 45 minutes. We took pictures, we ate, the food was the bomb, and we had a great time. And then a police officer came up, and he pulled his truck over, and he came over and said, "Oh, y'all, y'all good? You're good. I just came to get something to eat." And he stayed for a while, and we just enjoyed one another, and we did it right where the shooting happened. That's why Durham is dope, if you ever questioned it. So with that being said, let's get the evening going. Thank you, colleagues, for highlighting all of the tragedies that we have experienced, and I know we're going to work together to overcome them. Any punk that wants to put any threat on our libraries, we're going to smack you upside the head with a lot of love. That's how we stand together. All right, I will calm down and read the consent agenda. Priority items, I'm sorry, Madam Manager. Guys, this stuff is personal to us, it really is. We're not just some political sitting up here, it is personal. All right, Madam Manager, you have any priority items?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Williams, Mr. Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the Durham City Council. I have one priority item for you this evening. It is Agenda Item Number 26, Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Annual Report. The additional information requested during the April 4, 2024 City Council Work Session can be found under Priority Items by the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. That is all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the Council. The City Attorney's Office does not have any priority items tonight.
Thank you, Madam Attorney, for not having any priority items. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. The City Clerk's Office has no priority items either.
Thank you. Whenever you have one, and the manager have one, it's okay. The attorney, not okay. All right? All right, I will now move to the consent agenda. We'll get going, it's going to be a long night. Item number one.
The person's not here.
They're not here. Madam Clerk, as I'm going to get started, number one was pulled virtually, did we see the speaker? It's not on. Okay, thank you. Item number one, Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Number two, Approval of City Council Minutes. Number three, External Auditor Contract. And number four, Bloomberg Center for Public Innovation, BCPI Grant. Number five, Third Amendment to the Contract with Housing for New Hope to Serve as the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency. Thank you. Number six, First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement with the Durham Public School Board of Education to Administer the Promoting Academic Learning Program, PAL. Number seven, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Funds Reinvestment Partners Development Funding Commitment, 312 East Amsted Street Project. Number eight, Taxable General Obligation Housing Bonds, Series 2024. Number nine, Utility System Revenue Bonds, Series 2024. Number 10, Climate Corps Fellowship Agreement with Strategic Energy Innovations, Number 11, West Point on the Eno Park and River Parks Playgrounds Project Design Contract with Surface, 678 PA. Number 12, Fiscal Year 2025-2027 Employee Benefits. Number 13, Contract with FMLA Source Incorporated for Family Medical Leave Act, Americans with Disabilities Act Administration and Information Services. Number 14, First Amendment to Contract, Number 19791, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Subaward Agreement with Wall Street Juniors Incorporated. Number 15, Contract with Durham City Skating LLC, a subsidiary, limited liability corporation, that was pulled, okay, under United Skates of America Incorporated to operate the Wheels Roller Skate, skating rink. That was pulled. Number 16, Governor's Crime Commission, 2023 Criminal Justice Improvement Program Grant, Project Ordinance. Number 17, Contract SW74C Right-of-Way Acquisition Services for Various Sidewalk Projects. Number 18, Contract SW95 Sidewalk Preservation, 2024. Number 19, Contract SW93 EGI Sidewalk Repairs, 2024. Number 20, Contract SW93 EGI Inspections for Sidewalk Repairs. We're spending a lot of money on sidewalks, guys, just wanted to hear that. Number 21, Software and Maintenance Contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated, DBA ESRI Systems Incorporated. Number 22, Contract for Last Mile Services with GNS Communications and Technical Services Incorporated. Number 23, Contract for Last Mile Services with Lexair Electronics Sales Corporation. Number 24, Supplemental Agreement, Number 2 to the Reimbursement Agreement between North Carolina Department of Transportation and the City of Durham for the lease of the Durham Amtrak Station. Number 25, First Amendment to Construction of a Traffic Signal, Traffic Signal at Hillendale Road and Horton Road. Number 31, Resolution in Support of Immigrant Communities in Durham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull that.
31, thank you. Number 32, 2024 Short Session Legislative Agenda, and then we have our general business. Number 27, Consolidated Annexation, Wake Olive Apartments. Number 28, Zoney Map Change, Trellis Durham RTP. Number 29, Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Draft Annual Action Plan Budget Hearing, Annual Action Plan Adoption, and Grant Project Ordinances. And number 30, Public Hearing and Approval of Proposed Substantial Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2027-2017-2018, 2018-2019, 2019-2020, 2020-2021, 2021-2022, 2022-2023 Annual Action Plans, All right. All right. Those are our items. What's that difference? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, consent agenda, with the exception of pulled items.
So move second.
Second.
Moving the property second. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, what's that first one? Item 15? What's that? Uh, let's see. Contract with Durham. What do we have? All right, do I have a Gideon Doen? Is that Gideon Bueno? Oh, okay. Welcome, thanks for being here. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gideon Bueno. I am here to talk about-
Could you pronounce that again for us?
Gideon Bueno.
Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about the finalized contract with United Skates and DPR, which is, I think, item number 15. In their proposal, United Skates of America recommends a reduction of the skate floor to make additional space for seating, stating that many rinks were constructed with a skate floor that is, quote, "unnecessarily large, leading to a lack of seating space." I would argue that the principal purpose of a skating rink is to skate and not sit, reducing the skating floor, skating surface for impede in organizations like Bull City Roller Derby for running concurrent practices for beginner and advanced skaters alike. Additionally, I'm concerned about the rental rate that United Skates is slated to pay at the City of Durham. Per the finalized contract, United Skates would only pay $22,000 beginning year two, or approximately $1,833 per month. For reference, the median monthly rent for Durham residents per Zillow is $1,950 per month. Respectfully, I'd like to ask the Council why this private company is slated to pay a lower rate than Durham residents. Do you have a question?
No, I was going to just, I thought you were done, but I was going to ask you to make sure you send those comments, it's really hard for us to hear.
Okay, yeah, of course. But yeah, I guess I've been skating in this community since 2018 with Bull City Roller Derby, and it's hard to conceptualize or rationalize subsidizing a private company with no ties to this community with taxpayer dollars, and to then charge them money for, you know, accessing the same building that they paid for with their taxpayer money. So if at all possible, I would recommend or like DPR to collaborate more with the Wheels Residence Committee, which was created with the purpose of providing like oversight, transparency with the Durham community, and so far, that really hasn't been happening at all. And it's been frankly, a little disappointing, as much as I'd love to skate indoors later this year. But yeah, that's all I have to share. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Please also email your comments. Yeah, it was number 15, so. All right, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion for number 15.
So move for adoption.
Is there a second? Second, all right. Madam Clerk, you will please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And what was the second one? 31. All right, Councilmember Javier.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was going to go down to the podium and invite Representative Hurtado.
Welcome to the Bull City, Representative. It's good to see you. Hey, Pablo.
Thank you, I just want to say thank you. These two gentlemen, Pablo and Ricky, are members of Governor Cooper's, this is a long, long one, Advisory Council for Hispanic-Latino Affairs, and Representative Hurtado is actually the chair of that commission, and I also sit on it. So I'm going to read the resolution, I was just going to let them extend some time so they can say some words. Thank you. A resolution, just so folks know, a proclamation is the mayor's purview, a resolution is council's, so that is the difference, that's why you don't see it under proclamations, little bit of a civics lesson for City of Durham this evening. Resolution in Support of Immigrant Communities in Durham, whereas the City of Durham recognizes the vital role that immigrants have played and continue to play in the growth, diversity, and prosperity of our community, and whereas our city upholds the values of inclusivity, equity, and justice as cornerstones of our democracy, and whereas the City of Durham is a welcoming community and prides itself on being a place for everyone, and whereas the collaboration between immigrant communities and local law enforcement is essential for the safety and well-being of all residents, and whereas equitable access to municipal services, education, and opportunities for civic engagement for all residents regardless of immigration status is essential to the fabric of our city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Durham, that the Council commits to fostering a welcoming environment for all immigrants living in, working in, and contributing to our city, advocates for policies at the state and federal level that provide a clear path to citizenship for undocumented residents, and protect the rights of refugees and asylees, supports local initiatives to provide all residents with access to municipal services, including education and law enforcement protection regardless of immigration status, empowers and encourages law enforcement officials to intentionally foster trust and cooperation with our diverse immigrant communities, and encourages the community engage in dialogue and cultural exchange to bolster mutual understanding and respect among all residents And if Representative Hurtado could come and share some words, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Javier Caballero, and thank you, Mayor Williams, and the rest of the Durham City Council. It's good to be in the Bull City tonight to see this resolution passed and discussed. For context, as Chair of the Governor's Advisory Committee for Hispanic and Latino Affairs, we began this conversation about three months ago at our last meeting in February, and a time when the community was coming to us across North Carolina with increasing concern of their well-being, of their safety, as we see ratcheted rhetoric around the role immigrant families play, not just in our local communities, but across the country. As I think the Mayor Protem said it best, Washington's going to Washington, right, and Raleigh's going to be Raleigh. We want to make sure that local communities understand that they also have a role to play here to ensure the safety of all families, including immigrant families. There's nervous anticipation of changing state law here in the next few weeks that would take the constitutional rights of local law enforcement, such as a sheriff, around how they police, and we know that the City of Durham prides itself in seeking solutions, building trust with communities, and making sure that we're getting to the root cause of many of these issues. And so this resolution is one step in making sure that the immigrant community here in Durham knows that, at least, local officials here are thinking critically about how we continue to build trust and foster safer community for everyone. So I do want to thank you for, and Councilwoman Caballero for bringing this up, and the Council for supporting this resolution. I want to give a few moments to my colleague Pablo Friedman, who also is a resident of Durham and serves on our advisory council, to say a few words.
Good evening, Councilmember Caballero, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, members of the Council. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I told Chair Hurtado, our fearless, I said, "I want to say one thing. When our advisory group met and passed the resolution, there's one clause in there that talks about expanding driving permits such that everyone in North Carolina- such that everyone in North Carolina is eligible. I think we can all agree that safe roads and making sure more people have auto insurance is a good thing for our state, and it's a good thing for this country. And so my nudge to all of you is that there are Republicans in the State House that also support this, and you all just passed your legislative agenda this evening. Use your voice, use your power. A lot of people in this city could benefit from expanded driving permits. I think it's a win also for law enforcement. Talk to your law enforcement experts. I'm sure they're gonna support this. But here's my ask to you tonight. That's one of our clauses. Let's make more access to driving permits for people in this great state. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much, and Councilmember Javier, thank you for pulling that. All right.
I'm gonna pass it.
You want to call that motion?
I move that we pass resolution in support of immigrant communities in Durham.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for that work.
I just wanted to say one thing very quickly. I also wanted to shout out the towns of Carboro and Chapel Hill. This is an ask from the Governor Cooper's Advisory Commission. And I just want to say this, there was a commission, and then because leadership changed at the state, it went away. And then Governor Cooper brought it back. And there is a real clear understanding that this commission may also go away post-November. So local politics matters, state politics matters, federal politics matter. But in every election, it does actually mean a very, very different reality for a lot of your neighbors, and it's critically important. So I just want to shout out both Carboro and Chapel Hill for also passing resolutions. Thank you.
Hint, hint. Register to vote. Hint, hint, and vote. All right. We are now at our, do we have any other pulled items? All right, we are. Tina Motley Pearson, Pamela Andrews, Robin Barefoot. You all signed up under number 17, but the item you wish to speak to is Wake Olive Apartments. That is item 27, all right? So I just wanted to, also Emily Chamberlain. No, that's the resource person. Okay. So I don't know, I don't know how that got twisted, but it's number 27. All right, ready for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Tim Middleton, honorable council members. Good evening. My name is Andy Lester. I'm just gonna be with you tonight. Before we begin, staff would like to state for the record that all planning department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law. An affidavit to all notices are on file with the planning department. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning change has been received from Chris Hodges for two parcels of land totaling 12.16 acres and located at 5247 and 5255 Wake Forest Highway. The annexation petition is not contiguous to the primary corporate limits. However, the site is adjacent to an existing satellite area of the city limits. The applicant intends to annex and rezone the property to connect to city water and sewer services for the development of up to 218 apartment units. The current zoning is residential rural and residential suburban 20. For the initial city zoning of this site, if annexation is approved, the applicant proposes change this designation to planned development residential 17.928. This request received a recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission on August 8, 2023, by a vote of 11 to 0. And staff elected daylight that the text commitments eight and nine on the development plan were made prior to the sedimentation and erosion control amendment, and they are no longer in excess of the ordinance. Those two commitments have become current regulations. The properties are currently designated mixed-use neighborhood on the placetime map. The proposed PDR 17.928 zoning is consistent with the designated use shown on the placetime map. Thank you, staff and the applicant, and are available for any questions.
Thank you so much. You've heard the report. And at this time, I'll declare this public hearing open. Counsel, are there any questions for staff before going into it? All right, we have the applicant here. How much time do you think you need?
10 minutes.
Minutes? All right, could you put 12 minutes, someone, please?
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem, Middleton, and members of the city council. I'm Neil Gosh, attorney at the Morning Star Law Group. I also lost my voice, if that's not apparent. So please bear with me through this presentation. I want to start by thanking staff for their presentation. I've also been in communication with staff about additional proffers that the applicant will be making tonight. Before I get to those, let me give a brief introduction about the project. As has been mentioned, the rezoning and annexation request is on about 12 acres of land which fronts onto Highway 98. The site is adjacent to Neal Middle School, generally in the East Durham area where there's been a lot of new development taking place. Unlike a lot of the development that is taking place in East Durham or has been approved in East Durham, this project proposes apartments at a density near 18 dwelling units per acre. As far as development in East Durham goes, I think that's a pretty efficient use of land in East Durham. I know some of you have heard over the years that properties in this area are tough to develop for large footprint buildings like multifamily because of the rolling topo and environmental features. I think it's important to keep that in mind because this site represents one of the few areas where multifamily might be possible within the city's basin. This project is envisioned as a multi-story apartment community up to 70 feet in height at the tallest points. We have tapered the height so that the tall portions are at the front and middle part of the property. Towards the rear and sides, height would be limited to no more than 40 feet. And you can see that there are no stream crossings proposed, and we are providing 100-foot riparian buffer, or 100-foot on each side, riparian buffer. We have two entrances out onto Highway 98, paired with some road improvements at those entrances. We also have committed to providing a 10-foot multi-use path, which basically is a 10-foot wide sidewalk to accommodate bikes and pedestrians, and that will go across our Highway 98 front edge. There also are some commitments related to handling stormwater and contributing to Durham Public Schools. Now, at the top, I mentioned a few more commitments we have run by staff and are adding to this project. The first, and probably most important of which, is related to affordable housing. The developer is providing a minimum of 13 income-restricted units. At least seven of them will be affordable at the 60% AMI level, and the remaining income-restricted units will be affordable at the 80% AMI level or less. And this is for a minimum period of 30 years. Also, at least three of these income-restricted units will be two-bedroom units. Secondly, they have committed to having at least three EV parking spaces with the charging capability in the development. Another commitment they're adding is related to green building, and that is that the project will meet the requirements of a green building program. This could be something like achieving the bronze level or higher for the NGBS, or achieving a score of 75 or higher for Energy Star, or perhaps some level of the LEED certification program. And finally, they also have committed to using native plant species for any required plantings. I feel that these commitments go a long way to address not only the comments from the Planning Commission, but also the goals outlined in the Conference of Plan. I know the staff report indicates that the project is consistent with 13 out of 23 applicable policies. With these new commitments, I would estimate that five additional goals have been satisfied. The project definitely has been strengthened since the Planning Commission, based on their comments and feedback from staff as well. I didn't need nearly 10 minutes or 12. Sorry about that. And I want to thank you for your time, and our team is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, I have, one, two, three. Are these all online? Okay, sounds good. All right, so Madam Clerk, we'll start with our participants online. The first speaker I have is Tina Motley Pearson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. You have three minutes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Williams and members of the city council. My name is Tina Motley Pearson, and my address is on file. First, let me reiterate that we are not against development, but it should be done with care. And that is one of the big issues in southeast Durham, especially with triassic basin soils. The developers don't take into account the highly erosive quality of the soils. Also, the topography and geology often lead to blasting, especially if the developer is trying to maximize density. And I don't think you can see, I was trying to put a picture on earlier, but it didn't work, which is okay. But if you looked at Martin Branch Creek flowing into Lit Creek, there's like an obvious delineation where the sediment is coming from upstream. So Samantha Crop, the Neesh River Keeper, hosted a group of people to see the environmental impacts. The sediment flowing from upstream development is obvious. Not only is a sediment detrimental to aquatic life, but it also flows to Falls Lake, taking up valuable water capacity. Rolling Bay Marina has had an additional two feet of sediment in two years, and that was over a year ago. I know you've been supporting denser developments, but it's too much for this environmentally sensitive area, and no one is accountable, whether it's blasting damage or environmental damage. The citizens end up paying the bill for cleaning it up. And it's not fair for citizens to be subsidizing these overpriced developments. The developers do not pay the true cost because if they did, they would volunteer to build better. A good example of this is the 10 ruined wells on Junction Road. A year and a half later, they still do not have potable water. It is your job as representatives to the citizens to hold the developers accountable. You know, I also want to mention that there are wetlands on the property. Did you know that a one-acre wetland can absorb up to 1.5 million gallons of water? That's equivalent to four and a half feet of water on an acre of land. Wetlands are a huge resource that help reduce floodwater and should be protected. Please vote no on this project. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Motley Pearson, and good night. Next I have in person, so, all right, I'll come back. Ms. Barefoot, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mayor Williams. Can you hear me?
I can. If you could speak up just a bit. And I think we're working on sound in here as well, volume.
All right, is that any better?
A little better. Thank you. You have three minutes. Welcome.
All right, thank you so much. My name's Robin Barefoot. My address is on record. I'm speaking in opposition to the project. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge Mary Brooks of the City Manager's Office. She was very helpful today getting me properly registered. Over the last two years, residents have come before this body with their concerns, thoughtfully presented, and carefully researched. Time and again, they are ignored. Frequently, they're disrespected and disparaged. And tonight, we will hear the same concerns. We're gonna hear about the impact of overdevelopment and unrestrained density. We're gonna hear another proposal that is inconsistent with UDO requirements for building height and impervious surfaces. We're gonna hear a proposal with minimum environmental buffers and a lack of natural landscape. We're gonna hear about additional traffic beyond the capacity of roadways, lack of sidewalks and bike lanes, deforestation, sediment runoff, degradation of our creeks and Falls Lake. There are no parks. There are virtually no food stores, retail, commercial businesses, or medical facilities. The schools in this area are overcapacity. EMS, fire, police, and sheriff are lacking staff, and houses aren't selling to new taxpayers, and apartments are at a 9% vacancy rate. Yet Durham government feels no incentive to conduct a cumulative impact study. There are other counties in North Carolina that have and continue to raise the bar to rein in overeager and underperforming developers. Brunswick County, which is home to Holden, Ocean Isle, and Sunset Beaches, requires developers to evaluate, address, and propose infrastructure improvements before an application for development will be approved. Durham residents hold a reasonable expectation that the city and county government will acknowledge their effort to bring information from their communities, and that the government will investigate both the problems and the solutions, and take action to optimize outcomes across Durham, top to bottom and left to right. Those of us in chambers and on this Zoom call are waiting for Durham government to do so with regard to development in the city and in the county. Let us know how we can help, and y'all have a great night.
Thank you. You have a great night, too. All right, next I have Emily Chamberlain. Emily, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. You have two, three minutes. Sorry.
Hi, City Council. My name's Emily Chamberlain. I'm a UNC student who has been reporting on Durham and Durham's environmental issues with the Durham Voice, a student newspaper led by Dr. Carl Kinney. I've had the opportunity to speak with many Durham residents negatively impacted by the development and construction in the area, particularly a few who have been without water on Junction Road since 2022. And I urge you to consider the people of Durham and how they have been affected by the development before making decisions on approving projects like this because I think often we focus on the taxes and the money instead of what the people in the city are going through. High-density housing has had a negative impact on the people who live there, and it's only going to get worse the more that we add. So I do urge you to take that into consideration. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you so much. You, too. Donna Standback is here. Katie Ross, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, fine. All right, this is Katie Ross Behima. I don't want to reinvent the wheel, so I'm gonna read the first and last sentence of Planning Commissioner Sees's written comments. And you know, he is generally pro-development. What he said about this project, which was unanimously rejected by the Planning Commission, was, "Of all the rezoning requests to come before the commission during my time, this is arguably the most deleterious in environmental impacts and conveys the least considerations of infrastructure connectivity or characteristics identified in the future placotypes map in the comprehensive plan..." dot, dot, dot. "The proposal is isolated, premature, and at odds with the comprehensive plan while simply compounding negative environmental and infrastructure impacts evidenced through the current development in this part of the county." So that's pretty succinct. Mayor Williams, I listened to your State of the City. And as you undoubtedly know, when the President of the United States gives a State of the Union, he gets a response. And I am in the process of writing the citizen's response to your State of the City. Part of that's gonna be to talk about why you asked for trust, but trust has to be earned. You asked on behalf of the entire council. So you've just heard reference to those people on Junction Road, and they represent, they're similar to a lot of people who have been damaged by development. It's been a year and a half, and they still don't have water. And I would like to know, if you want trust, why haven't you put pressure on all the development community that has been granted so much from the city of Durham? They got their SCAD, and they even since then had several other pro-development amendments that even taken the UDO more in their favor. But I spoke a year ago about what it takes for citizens if they're gonna try to do something on them for themselves. They would have to hire experts at several thousand dollars minimum. They would have to hire attorneys. A lawsuit would cost a minimum of $50,000. And I am a retired attorney. And if, even if they won, those attorney's fees would- would not be reimbursed to them. So they have to make the difficult decision, are they going to take their life savings and try to get the developers to be responsible? Or are they going to have to put that life savings into repairing their wells and their home foundations? I would just like to see this council constitute a task force.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ross.
Okay.
Thank you, and thanks for tuning into the State of the City. And I'll make sure I let our county colleagues know about this water crisis again. All right. And I thought I saw Donna, but Donna, stand back. Can you hear me?
I'm here.
Oh, you're over there. Okay. Emily Green. Emily Green, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Williams and Council, for granting me this opportunity. My name is Emily Green, as stated, and my address is on file. I'm here as a concerned citizen, a healthcare worker in our fine city, a mother of a school-aged child, and I also sit on the board for the Grove Park HOA, which represents 1,100 homeowners in my community. And I'm here to speak in opposition of the Wake Olive Apartments, proposing 218 apartments located at the intersection of Highway 98 and Olive Branch Road. And the operative word I would like the council to keep in mind here tonight is strain. And this is strain on our resources, strain on our grocery stores, our schools, and emergency services. The growth along the corridor from Mineral Springs to Voicemail promises to add a minimum of 5,000 lives in this area, which constitutes approximately 10% increase in growth for schools in this area. The schools in this area do not have the capacity to sustain this type of growth. We're talking about Oak Grove Elementary, Southern High School, and Neal Middle Schools. Durham Public Schools already has enough challenges without placing this sort of demand and burden on these schools. It's a disservice to the teachers and the leaders who are trying to meet the needs of the communities, and a disservice to the students in the district who are already struggling for resources, for funding, and for manageable student-teacher ratios. The rapid population in this growth in this area is challenging our grocery stores. Many a nights, midweek, I can go to the grocery stores, and shelves can be found bare. And I think this is a precursor, precursory distress signal and a foreshadowing of food deserts that can potentially emerge in this area. The 10 miles between I-85 and the Creedmoor 50 Highway, there are three major grocery stores which residents can choose from. And as I mentioned, many of these shelves can be found depleted midweek. As many of you remember, back in January of 2024, over 7,000 residents in this area were impacted by a loss of power on the coldest day of the year. Many were stranded without food and means to travel to warming stations, which our fine city provided. Children could not go to school, and many went without food because our schools were the only source of meals for some of these children. My own community tried to rally to feed many of our residents. So grocery stores were again depleted because so many people lost their foods. As a healthcare worker in this area, I understand the burden on our emergency services and the current emergency response rate time, even to our healthcare facilities. We have prolonged emergency response rate times, adding additional...
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Miss, stand back. Do you have your phone on you? Is it online? I have you in two places at once.
No, it's not on here.
Yeah, I got you online right now. You're virtual and in person. That's impressive. All right, that's all I have in person, I mean, online, right? All right, thank you so much. We'll now move into in-person. And I will say, I can appreciate the thoroughness, but I'm also going to be thorough around folks signing up online and, you know, how many folks we can get online and, you know, with these cases, I believe as many people as they want can sign up, but just... Oh, no, no, you're fine. You know, I have many of you all in person and online, so just keep it in mind of, you know, just making room for folks that are going to sign up as well. But it's a public hearing, so we'll work through it. Not a biggie. It's gone now. All right, you disappeared. All right, first up, I have Ms. Wanda Allen. Madam Clerk, please remind me to talk about the sound of the car. After Ms. Allen, I have Ms. Sawaya. And then Ms. Rebecca. All right, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, everyone. I am Wanda Allen, and my address is on record. And as it's been noted tonight, there are several issues with this development, as marked in the Durham Planning Staff Report. The development failed at the Durham Planning Commission, zero to three. This area is also noted as an environmental justice injustice, and there are concerns with health and environmental risks. The plan, the, excuse me, the development plan provides minimal requirements of impervious surface and tree coverage in an area that has been identified as disadvantaged. The minimum requirement calls heat allen. Why do we keep pounding on an area that the federal, state, and the local government has identified as disadvantaged? This is not consistent with the placetime map. The placetime map in the comprehensive plan clearly states it should be mixed residential and commercial. The site is not continuous. There is no continuous sidewalks for pedestrians, no continuous bike lanes, and no pedestrian crossing. There is zero consideration given to the future residents with bike, walk, or roll, as is stated in the comprehensive plan. Neal Middle School is over 110.25 overcapacity now. That doesn't include of the 49 subdivisions under construction. As stated in the detailed report, connectivity to the commercial area remains a barrier. Individuals that choose to walk put their lives at risk. The triangle apartment stated, the apartment vacancy is at 9.5. More than 4% means there is housing supply, more housing supply than demand. Is this high-density development really needed? There are critical services that need to be addressed: traffic, fire, and EMS, which have not been met through this development. 0.7 miles in this 0.7-mile area, car crashes and deaths to bicycles occur, and will continue to grow with the 49 new developments under construction. We've heard tonight, fire EMS are understaffed and under severe and excessive demands on them. This area is also a car-sensitive area. North Carolina NC 98 and Olive Branch Road, the city and the state do not have any plans to improve this area.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I just thought about something. My mic was on earlier when I was asking Councilmember Caviar for her trash particles. So we don't hear it in here, but online, you're going to hear something that says trash. And then you're going to hear you're welcome. So that was not a hot mic, and I'm definitely not calling anyone trash. So just wanted to clear that up before I started getting news reports. You called a person trash. No, I didn't.
Okay, all right. Tammy Sawaya, my address is on file. Thank you, council members, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I want to point out that environmental justice is a big concern. And I went to the EPA's environmental justice screening tool to look at this property. And I was also surprised to see that this property also comes up as a disadvantaged community and is under the Justice 40 White House Initiative. So I'd ask that, has the planning group looked at this annexation to see if it's going to meet this or make it any worse? So I'd ask that we would look at that. Again, this area is not consistent with the placetime map. If you look at the proper area, you'll see that it's to be mixed-use neighborhood. This is just solely apartments. I mean, we realize that this area will be developed. We understand that. But I think what is being selected, we need something a little different. It would be better because of the traffic, to have low density, different zoning, totally not apartments. And I will add, you know, there are apartments just recently approved at the Walgreens, which is walkable to Foodline and all. This area is totally up the road from 98. If you try to walk to Foodline, you're going to be putting your life at risk. It does not make sense. And the comprehensive plan is not being met. We know that the Planning Commission failed it. Really, 10 of the 23 do not meet the comprehensive plan. I mean, it's not safe within a 15-minute walk to, first, the only grocery store in that local area, which is Foodline, which I go to shop at. It does not have the sidewalks or the bike lanes. And I think mainly, it's not within the existing community character. Right across, we have townhomes. We have a lot of townhomes and single-family homes. This is going to stand out totally different. It's not walkable to business, and the transit route is over two miles west. It's not car-centric. So I would just ask that you would really think about this and think of maybe a better development before we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Freeman?
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Freeman, and I live in southeast Durham. I wanted to reiterate a little bit about what other people were talking about the amenities that are accessible only by car. First of all, look at the Holloway Street that is into US 98 Highway, and goes down through, right, the apartments that are proposed borders this highway, goes further east on down to Wake Forest. This is a major corridor from Durham to Wake Forest, and the only corridor from Durham to Wake Forest because of Falls Lake. It's the only bridges across Falls Lake. Rural Olive Branch, I'm sorry, I may not be able to see this right here, because Rural Olive Branch goes down this way, down toward Briar Creek. It is a primary artery to US Highway 70 at Briar Creek and on to the airport from this area here. And then on this side of it, there is Sharon Road, which we've heard about them before. It is a rural road. It's a major artery, though, to US Highway 70 and on to RTP. In fact, a lot of people come through. It's a cut-through from 85 on to this area, too, from the north area coming through here. These and all roads in this area are heavily traveled. All roads in this area lack connected sidewalks. There are no marked crosswalks. And all these little intersections here, you will see that there's no crosswalks. There's no pedestrian signal at any intersection. There are narrow and even road shoulders. These are rural roads, so they're not meant for heavy traffic, except the US Highway that goes through there, and there's a lot of traffic through there. There's walking, bicycling, and rolling, or unsafe modes of transportation in this area. The schools are located here to the east of the apartments. Oak Grove is up here, around 2-point miles or more, and Southern High School is up here, further out. There is a park over here at 3.7 miles away. There's no recreation identified in this proposal, and healthcare is off the map. Walk two miles from this project here to the nearest transit on uneven, narrow shoulders with cars whizzing by. Let me fix that. I'm sorry. There you go. Sorry. Okay. And also, one of the things that I wanted you to talk about, or say that residents, that one of the planning commissioners said that residents here would walk to Neal Middle School, would walk to the shopping center, but they would do so in risking their lives. And another comment from a commissioner was that zero consideration is given to how future residents would walk, bike, walk, or roll, per the comprehensive plan language, to civic units, uses, and services in the surrounding.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Years of work on the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Next, I have Gary McLean. And after Gary, I have Ms. Pam Williams, and then Ms. Pam Andrews.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams and Durham City Council staff. My name is Gary McLean, and my address is on the file. I am opposed to this high-density development named Wake Olive Apartments. This development will have one entrance and one exit on the Highway 98, or Wake Forest Highway, which will add more congestion and traffic safety concerns to an already busy two-lane rural highway. It does not have continuous sidewalks, bike lanes, pedestrian crossings, or sufficient highway shoulders for bikes or students walking to or from Neal Middle School. From the Sharon Road-Patterson Road intersection to Baptist Road at Neal Middle School is seven-tenths of a mile long, and there has already been 166 accidents in the last five years, and one experienced bicyclist fatality on that road. If this development is approved, along with the other 49 dense developments still under construction, it is estimated that 81,600 more vehicles will be added to our already overburdened roads in southeastern Durham. For the safety of bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists, I respectfully ask you to vote against this development. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Pam Williams.
Good afternoon. My name is Pam Williams. My address is on file. This is just a picture of two of the accidents that's happened right there, and this is vicinity. The bicyclist was killed on the upper right. Three fire stations and two MS had to come out, and they closed NC 98. As you have seen in probably the slide a half dozen times, but I just want to emphasize again that over 16,227 new dwellings have been approved in this area. This equals about 37,300 people, which is about the size of Wake Forest, not count any existing population in the area. 49 subdivisions under construction in the Four Creek Basins now. And the four creeks are over on the left: Lick, Little Lick, Briar, and Panther Creek. This is a view of the map, and it's mainly the area in here. This is mainly just Lick Creek, and we have a few developments on here for Little Lick Creek. 42 dense developments in Lick and Little Lick Creek basins are under construction now. 17 more are approved and pending construction, and several of them have site plans already. 41% approved are townhomes, and 20% approved are apartments and everything. I want to bring to your attention, the red dots are what's under construction. The green triangles are, townhomes are included in there. And then the yellow squares are where I know that there are apartments that have been approved, under construction, or are very close to being under construction. We already have density in this area. In my opinion, we don't need the additional density in this area because of all the reasons that Emily Green and everybody else has stated, which is a fact. Here is an area where I wanted to show you is this is Wake Olive Apartments. Olive Branch, right in here, this road right here, that goes from Wake Forest Highway all the way over to Leesville Road, and then most people cut there and go either to US 70, or they go to 540 on Leesville Road. See all the developments that are under construction now. This picture was taken in October of '23, so some of these are under construction now and have been graded completely out. I mean, hundreds of acres, too. We are overwhelmed over here. So I'm asking the council to please push for improvements to our highways, NC 98, what? Wake Forest Road, because this is already overcapacity, it's drained, and we would like for you to provide a solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Hello. Got to get out of this. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Williams. Good evening, council. My name is Pamela Andrews, Wake Forest Highway. This parcel has special meaning to me. This land was purchased by my former pastor for a future church. My mom, my dad, my aunts lauded to buy this land for their church with many fundraisers to help pay for this land, so I'm trying to hold back the tears. The audit that we've referenced all the time shows that fire and EMS are not meeting the target response times. We know that. How will we serve another 37,000-plus people who will occupy these 49 developments underway with 17 more pending? We are not meeting the standards now. How can we possibly meet them with all these new additional dwellings on the way? I just don't know. A Durham firefighter sent me an article this week I want to share. It's titled "Stop Pretending You Have a Fire Department" by Bill Goldfeather. In NFA standard 1710 states, the initial full alarm assigned to a structured fire in a typical 2,000-square-foot home, the firefighters establishing providing water, firefighters are on the hose lines, firefighters are handling ventilation, firefighters are rescuing people, and 6.5 minutes, they're supposed to be there with 16 people. Would you bet on a professional football team with fewer predictable needed players, say three-fourth of your team showed up, 75%? I doubt it. But that's not the point. Here's what it matters. In a football game, if the number of players don't show up, you cancel the game. In firefighting, we don't have that option, and what we do is not a game. Station 8 has one engine, but no ladder truck. Only three FTEs are at the station most days when four is the national standard. We keep building in southeast Durham when 65 firefighters have left in the last year alone. We have 170 police officers short with no substation anywhere in the area. EMS has extreme deficiencies. In the recent fire academy, we had 68 cadets start and 26 graduated. Having three firefighters per engine when four are needed not only risks the lives of our firefighters, but it also the citizens of this town. We keep increasing the volume of houses that they have to cover, but not the resources. They are stretched to the breaking point. Lastly, firefighter Dixon, who sustained injuries when the house's ceiling collapsed on him the other week, he is a hero. Thank goodness there were others there to pull him out of that fire. At that point, Dixon and his coworkers were no longer fighting the fire, but were fighting for their lives, per WRL story. Let's get these first responder support before we continue annexing more houses, please. Southeast Durham is in a crisis, and we ask you, we plead with you for help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Donna Stanbeck, and lastly, Mr. Tom Freeman.
Okay. I'd like to ask for us to commit to no blasting. I know this may be difficult because I've seen the rocks they pulled up on the road across when they were getting another lane available, so it's more conducive to less density. If blasting occurs, then over 45 homes will be at risk for school, home, well, or septic damages with no recourse. The city holds the bond on these blasting companies. The fire department handles the documentation and the delivery of the permits, but they do not help get reimbursement from the damages done by these blasting companies. Can Durham City please help the residents that have suffered from these damages? We request that the city, yeah, that the city provide an independent third party to evaluate and pay restitution for damages to all these folks we presented on various times that have been impacted. The blasting continues to increase our air pollution. For example, the orange shows a actual meter for air pollution registering at 104 there at Dot Nichols. Between 101 and 150, members of sensitive groups may experience health effects, like if they have asthma or whatever. We continue with the blasting to damage homes, wells, groundwater, bedrock, and septic systems. You heard a little bit from Emily Shamless that spoke tonight, but she wrote an article April 8th on 2024 where she quoted Susanna Strzok as saying, "We've gotten used to a nightmare," and that's her thing, about the Durham development pollutes and damages the property. Another resident, Valaques, and her family buy water from Walmart, heat it on the stove and pour water on themselves from a container as they sit in a medical chair, a medical shower chair. The family stops showering every day and now only showers twice a week, or only bathes twice a week. Again, these people have been without water for almost a year and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Thomas Freeman. I'm a resident, lifelong resident of southeast Durham County. Had the opportunity many times to leave anywhere in the world with the United States Army, but I chose to stay here and serve our local community. Slide, please.
That's it.
Okay. That's not the first one.
Oh, you're right.
I'd like to request a commitment with, it's on the screen, and that commitment, and I'm reading from the, from section from 11 of the zoning map change report, and I'll read, "Street trees we provided along Wake Forest Highway at the time of the site plan." It goes on to say, "There are no further commitments to limit disturbance within the environmentally sensitive area. Such disturbances include location of stormwater devices and recreational open space and streams. As such, the proposal is not consistent with this element of the place type." And I draw your attention to the slide on the screen, and that environmentally sensitive area is in the far back of the property. And that's a commitment we expect you to adhere to. Go on to some slides you've seen before. It's our famous tomato soup in the creeks. What you're seeing is a sediment pond at one of our subdivisions, the residential, high-density residential construction that's in southeast Durham. Now, draw your attention to the picture on the right, the Durham drainage ditches. These are no longer viable streams. They are the drainage ditches from these high-density subdivisions that the Durham City Council approved. 400 feet to your right is what is Lick Creek, which used to be a viable biotic body of water, no longer. Next slide, please. We've got only a minute, but I'll show you, our reconnaissance and our sources and our personal observation indicate that other methods are being used. The Durham City staff has not come to Preserve Earl Dermal, any public body, to talk about the, some of the new devices that aren't working, by the way. There are bladder tanks, filter tanks, sedimentation traps, devices of that nature. Slide, please. And what we're left with, ladies and gentlemen, is the consequences. To the lower part of your screen, you'll see the polluted, heavily laden waters of Lick Creek flowing into Falls Lake. And I would add that what you have created is extremely compromised situation of one of the congressionally authorized purposes of Falls Lake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all of the cards that I have. Would you like to respond?
Thank you. And I'll just make a, wow, a few points. So the, there was a couple of comments made about bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in this area. So this project commits to providing that on its frontage along 98. That doesn't negate the fact that there might not be, or there's inadequate sidewalk going down Highway 98. So I recognize the point, but this project does commit to providing a 10-foot shared use path along Highway 98 for the frontage of it, which ultimately is bicycle, safe bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. We also have been in contact with the Sheriff's Department. If you're not aware, there is a sheriff's outpost at Neil Middle School, like right adjacent to it. Actually, it's on Durham Public Schools' property. So we've had some conversations with the Sheriff's Department about potentially providing a footpath between this project and the school. Initial reaction from the Sheriff's Department was that that would be probably okay. Before they approve anything, they would want to see a design, so that's something that will be handled in the site plan. And of course, we would need to coordinate also with Durham Public Schools to see if that kind of connection, footpath connection to the school would be, you know, desirable from that perspective. But this, you know, I would say this developer has and is open-minded about pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. There also was mentioned a couple times that the vacancy rate that has been published by the Triangle Apartment Association of 9%, and I don't dispute the number. However, you know, as I understand the metrics, a lot of that vacancy is coming from the higher-end stuff, in particular in downtown. When you talk about housing that's kind of outside of the urban, I'm sorry, the downtown tier, those vacancy rates get much lower. And, you know, this project is going to be, it includes the 60% and 80% AMI units and is, you know, in, it's directly adjacent to Neil Middle School. I think you're familiar with the area. The idea is for this to ultimately be kind of workforce-attainable type of housing. And there also was a couple of references made to the fact that this property is within the EPA's environmental screening tool, environmental justice screening tool, which I thought was interesting because, you know, a project which provides housing that utilizes green building techniques and provides affordable housing is very much consistent with the goals that the EPA would be reaching towards with respect to environmental justice. So I don't know that the fact that this property is in, within the screening tool, you know, is a negative here, especially given that the project actually does commit to doing a number of things that the EPA would recognize as being congruent with their goals. The, I think the last speaker mentioned a commitment or wanting a commitment related to not impacting the environmentally sensitive areas. As far as I know, that commitment exists on the development plan. There is no stream crossing shown on the development plan. I think he mentioned that the wetland area is kind of in the northeast corner of the property. We're not touching it. It's outside the building parking envelope. So it's, you know, and my understanding is this development will not be touching that area that is north of the stream, which includes that environmentally sensitive feature. So I mean, I think, I think there are a lot of things that have been said about this project that don't necessarily, in my opinion, highlight kind of why this project meets those concerns. Now, I will just go back and say, I totally recognize that this project was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission, and there were some key commitments that were made tonight that were not part of the purview of what Planning Commission considered. And, you know, it's a good thing that the Planning Commission has put those, you know, has an opportunity to state their opinion and put them in writing to us, because we had the ability to work on them and were able to include a number of those commitments in this project, ultimately making it a stronger project, and I think addressing a lot of this. The environmental concerns here, I think, are fully addressed, given that there is no stream crossing, providing 100-foot riparian buffer. And as far as the housing portion of this project goes, I mean, they've committed to doing green building techniques, whether that's the NGBS or LEED or Energy Star. That's something they've committed to as part of the zoning, and they've committed to providing affordable housing. And the density and unit type is something that this area lacks kind of wholesale. I think there's only two other projects that have multifamily in this Earl's Basin. So I mean, I think it's a pretty important project for this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Yeah. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? You will just state your name and whether you're a proponent or opponent. Thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Natalia Rosales. I'm a part of TRI Together for Resident Youth, peer-based here in Durham. You just gave us that proclamation earlier today. But mainly, I wanted to state and talk about TRI's involvement with the gun violence that is happening.
Gotcha. So this is currently a public hearing, so the comments have to be germane to that. For general comments, we do those on Thursdays.
On Thursdays? Okay. I apologize.
No worries. No worries.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, of course.
All right. And at this time, I am going to declare this public hearing closed and back before the council. However, before we get into Councilmember Cook's questions and our questions, I am going to recess us for 10 minutes, and we'll be back at 9:15.
Here's some tips to ensure that your garbage and recycling gets picked up. One, your carts should be put out for collection before 6:00 a.m. on your collection day. Two, your carts should be at least three feet from all other objects, such as mailboxes, telephone poles, fire hydrants, trees, and other carts. Three, your carts should be no more than three feet from the curb. Four, no vehicles should be blocking your carts. The mechanical arms on our trucks need direct access to your carts and cannot reach around vehicles. To find more information about garbage and recycling pickups, go to this web address. Owning a home provides a sense of financial stability, family, community, and pride. But housing prices are now higher than ever, making it hard for many Durham residents to afford their first home. That's why the city of Durham is offering the Down Payment Assistance Program to support eligible individuals with up to $80,000 in 0% interest forgivable loans to purchase a house within the city limits. Visit this site or call to find out if you qualify for the program. Everyone in Durham should be able to find a home they can afford. That's why Forever Home Durham is
That's why Forever Home Durham is creating affordable, livable, and inclusive communities for low-to-middle-income residents. From renting to owning, find out how the city is helping more people find homes right here in Durham. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com.
All right, we're going to get back to it. Thank you all so much for that, your patience on that. We have closed captioning that's happening where you don't see them. And going for two hours straight, just making it happen behind the scenes, all of the technical support, we give them a break. All right, so back to it. And I have closed the public hearing, so the matter is now back before the council.
Mr. Gush, got a couple of questions for you. I know you don't have a voice. Can we just talk about this sidewalk situation?
Sure.
You've said multiple times that it's a multi-use path. It's 10 feet long?
10 feet wide.
10 feet wide. And is it going to go across the entire boundary?
That touches Highway 98 for this property's frontage. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And this is going to be 218 apartments-ish.
Max, yeah.
We think that it's going to be doable in one, one building, maybe two?
One or two buildings, yeah. And certainly in one phase, if that, if that matters.
Is there the ability to have more than 100-foot buffer to those wetlands and that stream in the back, given that it's only one building? And I understand that there's parking.
I, I don't. I can't answer that question right now. I mean, it's, we're providing the 100-foot buffer on both sides of that stream and the wetland in particular is on the north side of that stream. So, we're already more than 100 feet away from that wetland.
Right, I'm just, I'm, I'm listening, we're hearing, you know, consistent reports. And I'm going to say again, as everyone knows, but I went and walked in Lake Creek and I've, I've seen the area. And I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to make things a little bit more sustainable, right? Like any, any things that we can, can talk about. And if there's only one building and a parking lot, I'm just wondering if it's possible to move that in such a ways to be more environmentally sensitive.
I mean, I would say, it's not something I could commit to tonight. I don't know that it would be possible ultimately, but, but, you know, the, we're providing more than 100 feet of untouched area for the width of that stream because that, the first 100 feet is on the south side of that stream. And then the next 100 feet, I think, goes beyond our northern property line. So, the north side of this property is just not being touched.
Okay, I don't have any other questions right now, Mr. Mayor. I will potentially speak later. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Baker. Right, Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And it's actually not for the applicant, it's for staff. And it might be for Sarah and Bill, sorry. And I, I tried, we tried to get it solved during the break. I found it. You did? Okay, thank you. You're amazing. Thank you. So, and this was a question I asked the applicant when we met earlier. So, there were several text amendments committed at the intersection of Baptiste and 98 on a zoning case. And this is why, thank you, staff, because I was like, it was pre-pandemic, because we hadn't gone to Zoom yet. That's how my brain works. I can remember when it was on Zoom or off Zoom. So, I think staff found the case and I just wanted to hear what some of those text command, text amendments were to that case and if you could just name the case and when it was. Because my understanding is that there was supposed to be a light at Baptiste and 98. That was one of the commitments. And several other, at the time, what we called like off-site. It wasn't relevant to their case because their case was down Baptiste and down Neal Road. And so, when this case came forward, I was kind of like, wait, what happened with those other improvements? Because it does actually, between this case and that, would improve that whole area. So, just thank you. That's all.
Sure. Good evening, Sarah Young with the Planning Department. That case is Falls Village North. And they had a number of-
Can you repeat that? Repeat that.
It's Falls Village North. Had a number of commitments. Let me locate this a little better. Including at NC 98 and Baptist Road, installing a new traffic signal, restriping Baptist Road, and I'm just kind of paraphrasing some of these, construction-exclusive southbound right turn lane on Baptist at 98. And extending the eastbound left turn lane, same location. Extending the westbound turn lane, same location. And then at 98 and Kemp Road, installing a new traffic signal there as well. Constructing northbound Kemp Road to have an exclusive left turn lane and an exclusive eastbound right turn lane at 98 and Kemp Road as well. And then there were some additional things at their driveways and along Baptist Road. But I think those are the things that impact 98.
Thank you. And then can, and this might be a question for Bill. Obviously, those, and some of them may have happened, but certainly not the light at Baptiste and 98, which is what kind of prompted my question. Can you explain, you know, these folks proffered this thing, it's tied to traffic. Can you just share, like, what's the process to like, what tips what off so that we get the actual improvement? I guess is my question.
Yes. So, Bill, Judge, Transportation. So, when a traffic impact analysis is required, the study area is typically based on the size of the development. So, we determine the number of intersections based on whether contributing 10% or more additional traffic to any leg of the intersection where the development traffic's going to contribute. So, larger developments have larger study areas than, than smaller developments. But, so then, once any development triggers or has any required improvements at an off-site intersection, typically on the plan, there is a note that says the improvements may be phased at time of site plan. So, then at time of site plan, they'll come in with an updated analysis to look to see, okay, is this improvement needed now to accommodate this development to provide an adequate level of service? In the case of a traffic signal, they would be looking to see whether or not it meets the traffic signal warrants and whether or not NC DOT and the city would approve a traffic signal at that time, so.
But if you're the developer who put the, who put the proffer in, like, you're the one who's going to, even if the thing happens two years after your proffer, you're still going to be stuck making that commitment because now there's enough volume essentially to trigger that, that, that what was proffered at, at time.
Correct. So, I mean, the, the sooner they come in with site plan, the more likely they may be able to phase things without other background growth rate. But the, the longer it takes from time of zoning to the time they bring in, the more just background growth or other developments come in that don't, maybe don't require a TIA. So, makes it more likely that it's going to be required with the first certificate of occupancy rather than maybe the 100th or the 200th.
Okay. And then I guess I have a question for staff. Where, where, where are we with that project?
Funny you should ask. I was just pulling up the arials. So, the only thing we have is a phasing site plan, which is not a site plan for the development, but lets them get started on some phasing and, and site work. That plan, by the most recent aerial we have, which is October of 2023, it appears that no site work has begun as of October 2023.
So, it's just-
It's not been built.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions for now.
All right, Councilmember Freeman.
I'm sorry, I was trying to just backtrack through Falls Village North a little bit to just see, because it's something I wouldn't have supported. Just acknowledging that. I feel like the conversation around the crisis in this area has been well documented and it's essentially up to the council whether we continue down this path. And it's very concerning. I will say that I was, I was trying to figure out if the Justice 40 piece is something that's been factored in in the Planning Department. Because it feels like you're, if you pit green building against environmental sensitivity on the ground, that doesn't feel like we're actually winning in it. And so, it would be great to hear how our staff is planning to address that.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe that only addresses federal projects. So, staff wouldn't have anything regarding that?
Nothing regarding an evaluation of 98? Or Falls Lake?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was chatting with Mr. Judge about this. Can you repeat the question for me? Maybe I can help.
So, essentially, if the Justice 40 is focused on, I hear you, with the federal projects, how are our federal projects tied to Highway 98 or to Falls Lake? Because what I feel like is that the infrastructure issues are what we're going to continue to see as a problem, just exacerbated because of the erosion in the area and the triassic soil is not going away. So, if we're not putting anything in place, what does it look like moving forward for staff to do evaluations based on green building in one hand and then kind of like the environmental sensitivity in the other?
So, we, we currently, as part of our comprehensive plan analysis, there are policies about both of those things and we do evaluate those. We are not directly involved with any federal funding, grants, those kind of things. So, it's difficult for us. I don't have any information to share on, on that aspect.
But if you're the developer who put the proffer in, like, you're the one who's gonna, even if the thing happens two years after your proffer, you're still going to be stuck making that commitment, because now there's enough volume essentially to trigger that, what was proffered at time.
Correct. So, I mean, the sooner they come in with site plan, the more likely they may be able to phase things without other background growth rate. But the longer it takes from time of zoning to the time they bring in, the more just background growth or other developments come in that maybe don't require a TIA. So makes it more likely that it's going to be required with the first certificate of occupancy rather than maybe the 100th or the 200th.
Okay. And then I guess I have a question for staff. Where are we with that project?
Funny you should ask. I was just pulling up the aerials. So the only thing we have is a phasing site plan, which is not a site plan for the development, but lets them get started on some phasing and site work. That plan, by the most recent aerial we have, which is October of 2023, it appears that no site work has begun as of October 2023.
So it's just-
It's not been built.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions for now.
All right, Councilmember Freeman.
I'm sorry, I was trying to just backtrack through Falls Village North a little bit to just see. It's something I wouldn't have supported. Just acknowledging that. I feel like the conversation around the crisis in this area has been well documented, and it's essentially up to the council whether we continue down this path. And it's very concerning. I will say that I was trying to figure out if the Justice 40 piece is something that's been factored in in the Planning Department, because it feels like if you pit green building against environmental sensitivity on the ground, that doesn't feel like we're actually winning in it. And so it would be great to hear how our staff is planning to address that.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe that only addresses federal projects. So staff wouldn't have anything regarding that?
Nothing regarding an evaluation of 98? Or Falls Lake?
I'm sorry, I was chatting with Mr. Judge about this. Can you repeat the question for me? Maybe I can help.
So essentially, if the Justice 40 is focused on, I hear you, with the federal projects, how are our federal projects tied to Highway 98 or to Falls Lake? Because what I feel like is that the infrastructure issues are what we're going to continue to see as a problem, just exacerbated because of the erosion in the area, and the triassic soil is not going away. So if we're not putting anything in place, what does it look like moving forward for staff to do evaluations based on green building in one hand, and then kind of like the environmental sensitivity in the other?
So we currently, as part of our comprehensive plan analysis, there are policies about both of those things, and we do evaluate those. We are not directly involved with any federal funding, grants, those kind of things. So it's difficult for us. I don't have any information to share on that aspect. But we do, in broader terms, evaluate the policies related to various environmental things in our reports.
And is there a priority ranking around which policies are?
Yeah.
That's all I have so far.
All right, Councilmember Rist.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I appreciate the proffers, as Mr. Goesch has described tonight. And I think in many ways, I know the Planning Commission vote is down, but I think the proffers respond to a lot of the comments they raised at the Planning Commission. So thank you for that. And I appreciate the comments from the advocates, although I'm not sure. I totally agree with all the issues you've raised. In particular, I've heard you say you support development here, but just not at a high density. And so what I'm focused on here is that this property is designated as mixed-use neighborhood on the placetime map, and that envisions a mix of housing types that should be at a high density. So to me, this is the way the placetime map is designed. This should be at higher density. But I'll leave that there. I am, I'm most concerned about the placetime map and the fact there is not a mix of uses here. And so I know that we, in other cases, we've sort of flexed. We said, well, there's other uses nearby that sort of takes care of that. In this case, and I recognize this is a relatively narrow frontage on the property, right? And there is other commercial just down the street, what's maybe like .4 miles away, that may be competitive, or may in some ways that commercial may create more opportunities for commercial, right? And so I'm just concerned that we're kind of giving up, not giving up, but we've worked hard on these plans that envisioned this as a mixed-use neighborhood, and now we're sort of just going against these plans. I'm just, I feel like we need something better at this location that would have a mix of uses. That's my sense.
Yeah, Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, and thank you, all the members of the community that came out. Just a couple of things on this case, and I do have some questions that I'll put to the developer in a moment. But I did want to, again, thank our friends from Preserve Earl Durham, who have come out tonight, and just say a couple of things about the nature of our decision. And I think that, and it's not anybody's fault. I think sometimes that we may not do a good enough job as a council member, as council members, I'll speak for myself, me, in articulating what the nature and actual decision we have to make before us tonight. And that's before us. A lot of the arguments I've heard tonight, and I'm not saying I'm against the arguments, but a lot of the arguments and concerns are universal concerns that speak to the area. Whereas I'm being called on tonight to make a decision about Wake Olive Apartments. And there's a line that we have to walk. There's a fairness issue. There's a truth in advertising issue. We take money from developers to put an application in. That suggests that we're doing it in good faith, knowing that that project has a chance of being passed, a chance of being failed. So in good conscience, if I know that I'm dealing with a universal, comprehensive problem in that area, I cannot burden one particular application with the responsibility of the entire area. I just want to explain the nature of the decision that's before us. So the fix for a lot of the things that you're concerned about have to happen much earlier in the process. Because by the time it gets here, to this point in the decision-making matrix, it's an issue of fairness. Money's been taken. Representations have been made. And I'm not saying that some of the things don't need to be addressed, but those fixes are universal fixes. So the arguments I have to take into account have to be specific and germane to Wake Olive Apartments. And I do have questions about this particular development. You know, be it far from me to give advice moving forward on strategy or tactics, but if it's true, if infrastructure and first response issues are true for this project, then it's true for every project in that area. Which brings us to the concept of moratorium. And if that is the case, then this is too late in the process for that, because I've got to make a decision on Wake Olive Apartments. It's not that we're discounting the arguments or discounting your concerns, but there are issues that constrain, when you sit in this seat, your decision-making. So I just want to say that, because I think that sometimes the perception is that we're just not listening, when in reality, there are some legal responsibilities we have. There are some fairness issues. I wouldn't want to apply somewhere where they had no intention of accepting me. They didn't tell me at the beginning, and take my money and make me go through the process. And then when I get to the end, then they let me know, well, we're working on a universal problem in that area. So I invite this council, I invite the community. If you want us to take up policy decisions that are universal and that are fixing that entire area, then we need to have that conversation and do those policies before we get to this part of the process for individual development projects. I also want to say, you know, we talked about the term mixed-use neighborhoods. Mixed-use neighborhoods speak to the entire neighborhood. Mixed-use neighborhoods don't mean that every development has to have townhomes, apartments, and single-family homes. It's interesting. One of the observations I heard tonight was that this particular development would stick out from the townhomes and single-family homes near it, which is an interesting observation, because mixed-use neighborhoods means the presence of all of them. So on the one hand, there's a saling it for not being mixed-use, but then pointing out that what's around it is all of one of the other things, components that make mixed use. So what's missing in that particular area, right, there are apartments in that area. So I want to just respectfully put that out there. Durham is an urban center. Durham is a city. It is the 74th largest city in the United States. It's the fourth-largest city in North Carolina. Urban centers are characterized by density and a lot of people. And my job, I'm elected as a councilperson of a city, of an urban center that is growing. That doesn't mean I'm at war with preserving anything else, but I'm very aware of what's happening in Durham. And oftentimes, what we're called to do is manage outcomes. I wish I was as powerful as people think we are. Oftentimes, what our job is to do is to manage outcomes. So I just want to respectfully put that out there. So to this particular case of Mr. Goesch, I did have a couple of questions. When did the 60% to 80% AMI proffers, when did those get made?
I had those discussions with staff. I sent those proffers to staff last week.
Last week?
Yeah.
So it was subsequent to the Planning Commission's?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
I want to give you a chance to speak to something, because in the memo from the staff, there's some language, and the language almost presents as if it's causal. And I want to give you an opportunity to, and it may or may not be, but I want to give you an opportunity to respond to something. It says, "Subsequent to the Planning Commission's hearing on August 8, 2023, the applicant increased the maximum proposed height to 70 feet and removed the tax commitment that limited mass grading to not exceed 50% of the gross land area at one time." So my question, was that in any way attached to the results of the Planning Commission? Because the reason is almost as if it's causal, and why were these steps taken?
Yes, these steps were taken in, all right, a couple reasons. So it wasn't necessarily in response to what the Planning Commission said. This case, I think it was mentioned earlier, was filed some time ago prior to, for example, the mass grading and phased development tax amendments. There are also a number of other UDO items that were not present at the time we filed this case. So when we originally filed, there was no mass grading, phased development, UDO text amendment on the books, right? So once that was passed, the commitment really didn't make any sense after that, because it's already regulated in the UDO now, how much you can grade at once before additional tree save is required. We're going to be in that first tier no matter what. So that commitment didn't make any sense on the height. Frankly, that was just left out from the original application. I think it was made clear at the time at the Planning Commission that the buildings would be taller, but the application itself did not state what that height would be. So I believe the default height under the UDO at the time was 35 feet. It's now 40 feet. So, you know, when we made the statement that the buildings would be taller, you know, it was indicated from staff later that we need to revise the development plan to show that it would be taller. So that's where the height would come in. It wasn't in response to concerns or anything from the Planning Commission, but it did happen after Planning Commission as a result of just kind of the timing of it. I also wanted to correct the record from earlier. The site could be developed with more than one or two buildings. I mean, it could be a couple buildings, a handful of buildings. But you asked about not having buildings kind of closer to that stream, and that's something that I think we are able to commit to, because in order to take advantage of the natural topography of the property, the stormwater facilities likely end up in that section closest to the stream instead of a building there. So I think we're going to be much further away from the stream than is indicated, than 100 feet. We're going to be, our buildings are going to be further than 100 feet away from the stream.
Thanks for that. Of the 218 units, what is the percentage of, what percentage of them will be income restricted? Is it 60%?
It's like just less than 6%. 6% is 13.08, and we have proffered 13 units, so it's like 5.9%.
And how many 60%, how many 80% of that, whatever?
Roughly in half, so out of 13 units, seven would be at 60% AMI, and six would be at 80% AMI.
Okay. For how long?
A period of 30 years minimum, yeah.
All right. I think that's all I have for now, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cook.
I don't have any questions. I'm just going to speak. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of the folks who have been showing up to talk on behalf of the rivers. It makes me think of the Lorax, because the trees have no tongues. And I think that that's an important piece of any great city and any good community is having healthy waterways. And we know that the birds and all of the little critters that live in the rivers can't come speak on their own behalf. So I just want to say that I appreciate you folks coming out every day. I think it's super important. Here's the thing that bothers me and has bothered me since I've been on this council for a few months now, which is that we have these projects that come before us vastly changed from when they went in front of our Planning Commission. And I understand that we are meant to be the policy deciders here, but we have literally appointed people who have expertise in these areas to help us make educated decisions. And I think that this is a critique that I myself have, and I hear a lot of people have, of our courts and our higher office legislatures, that they have access to information, but they will decide that they are the experts in those things and make decisions based on their feelings about them. And I don't want us to be guilty of that. I do think that I have expertise in a lot of areas around housing, but it is, my expertise is not in development, clearly. And I think that that goes for almost everyone on this council, my seatmate here excluded. And I'm just not sure what the issue is, particularly with this. It came in front of the commission in August, we just heard of. That's eight months. We had eight months, and we got proffers last week. And I don't think that the proffers, I don't think it's unexpected that those are proffers that would be attractive to this council. And I'm concerned that we're seeing over and over again different projects coming in front of our Planning Commission than come in front of us. And once they change, we sort of vote yes, because we're excited to see these offers that have been made. And we don't get an opportunity to hear our appointed experts' opinions on these actual projects. It's a concern to me. I've brought it up before. I'm going to bring it up again. Again, I think that for this particular project, there were eight months in which we could have had changes. And I still think that there are concerns about the mixed-use property, about the walkability here, about any sort of transportation. So it is going to be my motion tonight to send this back before the Planning Committee with the proffers that have been added. So I would like to make that motion at this time.
We are, one moment. Councilmember Cook, would you be open to just, yeah, which I believe she is. You are making a motion, right?
Yes, that was my intent.
So I'd like to hear everyone's comments first.
That's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember, one moment. Baker? You had your hand raised.
So, yeah, I just, I wanted to speak on this, because there were a few things that I wanted to mention before we made any sort of motion or took a vote. Because I think that there are a few issues that I just, that I want to raise here. First of all, out of context, this is very similar to the Aura 751 case that we saw a couple of weeks ago. It's multifamily in an area that doesn't have a lot of multifamily. We have a number of residents that have come and spoken out. Very similar proffers, and the Planning Commission voted against it. So I think that it's important that we compare this parallel case, and we ended up voting unanimously in favor of Aura 751. Out of context, there are similarities there. So I think that that's where it's important to look at the context of this case and how it is different. And that's where I come to some of the Planning Commission comments, some of which have slightly been addressed, but many of which, maybe most of which, have not been. And I think it comes down to a site-specific issue as well as some related policy issues. So Commissioner Trapp said, "There are too many questions on the long-term impacts on the environment in this area in Durham." Commissioner Valentine, "Long-term environmental impact development is causing in this area should alarm every citizen, public official in Durham. We need an opportunity to be more intentional in how we approach development in this area moving forward." And then there was actually a community member that read Commissioner Ciss's comments, although didn't read all the way through some of the comments I thought were very important. So Commissioner Ciss, who wrote, "Of all the rezoning requests to come before commission during our time, this one is arguably the most deleterious environmental impacts, conveys the least consideration of structure connectivity or characteristics identified in the future place types map in the comprehensive plan." But then he says, "It would essentially create a 1,000-foot-deep barrier along the border of Neal Middle School, and even more problematically, a 1,000-foot barrier along the western perimeter of the project, completely precluding this larger area from developing in a manner consistent with the future place types map as a mixed-use neighborhood." Very related to Councilmember Rist's comments about how this is designated as a mixed-use neighborhood. "It is a contiguous, large contiguous, mixed-use area designated on the place type map, and yet, if we only look at the site and don't look at the context, we lose the broader picture of what our actual policies in the comprehensive plan are calling for. The parcels are not speaking to one another." So this is where we have a site-specific issue, and it's where we have a policy issue. We don't have that connectivity. So whether we have mixed use on this site or not, we don't have a way of actually connecting in any meaningful way between this site and other adjacent sites that are or are not developed at this point, particularly when we think about multimodal safety, or safety of all users. This is next to a school. This is a really, really, really important site. It's a huge opportunity, and we have to get it right. And this is not proposing something that would get it right. It has on one side the school, on the other side, large contiguous area that is designated- that is designated as the mixed-use place type. That is very different from the context of Ora 751, which was trapped between all of these different spaces and didn't have a lot that could connect to it. So really what we need is, is more coherence across parcels within this area. We need that connectivity that Planning Commissioner Sees alluded to. And I believe if we were to approve this, we'd be missing a really major opportunity to ensure that this area is, is developed carefully and intentionally. We recognize the huge environmental impacts that have been taking place in this area. This is a proposal that is on the table here before us today. And so we just need to make sure that we are getting it right. And the proposal that's on the table today is not getting it right.
Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. So I think Councilmember Baker, so there has been two apartment complexes in the last, whatever, month, right? The one at Sharon Road on the one or 751, which is a completely different side of town. In both of those cases, the place type map, you could argue any which way, quite frankly. I think until we get better parameters, which I've mentioned several times now, to staff, it's going to be difficult and not straightforward as council members to really figure out what's what. And I think everyone is, quite frankly, fumbling along here with, with our new comp plan. But I think the difference there is that both of those apartment complexes were already adjacent to commercial. So it didn't bother me that there was only one place type in there because the surrounding area already had some of the townhomes and single families and whatnot. This is an area, if you, if you look at it, and interestingly, there are two cases. I looked it up. We were actually on Zoom. There was two cases in '21. One was, I was calling it Steeplechase, but it's not. It's Triple Crown. I mean, come on. And then this Falls, whatever, River North, I can't even remember. All these lovely suburban names. And I voted, I voted no on the Triple Crown. I can't remember if it actually passed or not, but I remember voting no on that one. And I remember voting yes, even though I don't actually like age-restricted communities. I think it's discriminatory. And I think that might be the only age, 55-plus community I've voted on. I voted yes on that one specifically because of the commitments that they made around the traffic light and the other improvements, which we know, especially in that corridor, will make driving that road, especially as we wait for NC DOT to do whatever they're going to do on 98. I thought that those were really important. I'm just sharing this as why did I say yes to something and no to something else, even though they were in the same night, same part of town? And it is around those proffers. So there are some really great proffers on this project tonight. And if it was a project that was closer in and less far-flung, I could be convinced to vote yes. I think the big part for me is that it is, it is this isolated piece that is distant from other commercial and then can set a trend. So it's not that it's apartments. I think apartments are fine. I think the affordable housing is excellent. It's not that. It's that what is going to be the pattern of development down 98? And that is actually what I'm worried about. What's the pattern going to be? How do we really think through it? It was, I think, one of the reasons that I didn't vote for the whatever Triple Crown case was because I didn't like what the pattern of development around 98 was looking like. And so I will be voting no this evening because we do need to get it right. So coming down this corridor is really, really important. What we say yes to is really, really important. I think what was before the comp plan was a different, was a different era and really ensuring that our, that there's, you know, clear patterns that really promote what we really want. At a certain point, you can't ignore what the comp plan says. You kind of have to do, you know, you can make a case for, well, the broader area or it's adjacent to other commercial. In this case, it doesn't have any of that. So what this project does will influence whatever else happens around it. And it's not the density. I think it's great that it's apartments. But I do wonder about how is it going to connect back up to Sharon Road? And what is that going to look like? And I don't think that this would do us justice. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
May I approach him?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, colleagues, for your great comments. I, I do think context matters in this area. And again, the, when we have, when we apply the designation of mixed-use neighborhood, the test is not for one particular development to have mixed use in every development. The context is, and somebody, one of our community members actually pointed it out. There are townhomes over there, just townhomes. There are single-family homes over there, just single-family homes. The neighborhood is the sum total of all of those pieces. So if you've got single-family homes here and townhomes there, no apartments in the area. And we put apartments there, but we say to the apartment complex, hey, where are the single-family homes and townhomes on that one parcel? When you cross the street, you've got solely townhomes or single-family homes. I think the context is what, how you get to neighborhood. So I totally agree that context matters, particularly when you're applying some of these designations with the word neighborhood in it. So, so I want to fully associate myself with that. I do also want to say, I read everything that the Planning Commission sends us and I have high regard for the Planning Commission's comments. They inform my decisions. We've gotten unanimous votes from the Planning Commission to approve something and we didn't approve it. There have been times when they said, don't approve something, we've approved it. There have been times when the Planning Commission's been split so on their decisions. They're a deliberative body and I respect their process. I do want to say that all of our boards and commissions are volunteers. And when we put them on, they're not all necessarily experts. All of our people on the public safety, community safety commission, they were not all experts on public safety. Our boards and commissions can allow you to become an expert. I mean, you can get on the planning commission and if you apply yourself and really read all the stuff and get into it, over time, you can become an expert. Oftentimes, these planning commissions and boards allow people who just want to volunteer to get expertise and experience in areas that they may have none in. And we don't, we don't ask for certifications of expertise and planning to get put on the planning commission. Some of them are experts, some of them are not. Some of them are just citizens and residents who have an earnest interest and passion about the area. And they are invited through years, months of engagement, of reading the UDO, of getting experience with projects. They are invited to become an expert. But they are certainly not 100% all experts when they go on the commission. At the end of their terms, some of them will be, some of them won't. Some of us on the council will, will become experts in certain areas. Some of us will not. Some of us read all of our materials before we come to meetings. Some of us don't. But we still cast votes. And, and the planning commission is, they're not a jury. They're advisors and I take their advice very seriously. But I do want to, I don't, I want to be clear that when our residents and citizens volunteer, volunteer for these boards and commissions, we don't require that they are experts on, in the area that they're volunteering in on these boards and commissions. They certainly can become them. I, I'm split. I really do have some, some, some questions and split on this project. So I was really listening seriously to the, to the concerns raised by my colleagues. I, I do want to say in terms of what's going on around these projects, if, and I say this with all seriousness, if, if moving forward, developers need, should be looking at, how does my project fit with others around it? How does it universally forward the comprehensive plan for our city? Then we need to put that disclaimer in the application. We, we need to tell them upfront that one of the tests you're going to have to meet is, is when you get to this council, is, is looking at, how does this forward the entirety of our comprehensive plan? How is this reconcilable with our values as a city? It's only fair because if we're going to talk about that, we have the right to talk about it. But they need to know when they apply that that's going to be one of the tests and standards applied to them when they get to this point. I have no problem with that test if that's what we want to do. But we need to, we need to advertise that. And we need to make sure that they know that when they get before this governing body, that these universal questions of how your project fits into our overall view as a city for an area, how this particular project forwards that. I think, I think we should tell them that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, actually, I'll go here first and then come back. Councilmember Cook.
It sounds like there's not support. And just to not elongate the process, I'm going to withdraw my motion. I do want to add that the, as, I think there was some comment before, but the issue of the apartment building and density is not the problem for me here. I want to make it known that I work in housing. There is a, there is a shortage of certain types of housing. I am interested in this type of housing being developed. It is not that. I think my council members have stated it very well. It's a contextual issue for me on this project and this piece of land. But I want to withdraw my motion at this time because I think it's just going to elongate the process.
Right, Councilmember Caballero.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so we all know that the comp plan is just a plan, but those policies are clear. They're in there. People can choose not to follow them and that's up to them. But to tell, I think it's really clear what the standard is as a city. And I think it's fine to make a, you know, essentially a rezoning is an exemption to, right? The thing is already zoned. What you're asking for as a developer is an exemption to what it's already been zoned. Often it's single-family homes, which is why I often go for the rezoning because I'm getting density where I need it. In this case, this is a great project as far as density. It's not that. To Councilmember Cook's point, the no isn't around density. The no is not because I don't like the project itself. The no is where it is on 98. If it was closer in, it would make a lot more sense to me. It's far-flung. Things haven't kind of come down the highway and there's not that many opportunities in Durham to ensure what is coming down is really, really good. It, it really is thinking through a lot of the policies that we're pushing in the comp plan. So I think as far as, as my perspective is, we've made it pretty crystal clear what policies we want. I really appreciate that the developer tried. And so this is not, you know, I think you saw two other apartment complexes that were very similar. And unfortunately, their location made them, in my view, exactly what needed to tip them over to a yes because, because you could walk to a grocery store. There was something right there. In this case, it's, it's very far-flung and we do need to push on our NC DOT around 98. I do want to remind everyone that 93% of all dollars that NC DOT has goes to road expansion and road creation. That is not our formula. That is a formula the General Assembly, under Republican leadership, passed, I think in 2014. So I just keep doing that because that's also part of our job is to remind people how decisions are actually made and where they're made. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
All right. And I, I actually, I thought I was going to be the harsh one on this one. After listening to my colleagues, a lot of my concerns have been stated. I wanted to address a few things. Staff, as far as the blasting is concerned and damages to homes, like, do we have any update with that? Like, do we have any reports that are showing that developments that we've approved are, are causing this? Okay.
Beau Ferguson, Deputy City Manager for Public Safety.
And also any follow-up that's been happening?
I don't have any additional information from a previous council meeting where we addressed concerns. I'll be happy to check in with the fire marshal tomorrow and, and see if there are any additional information. But I'm not, I'm not aware of any. That doesn't mean there hasn't been.
Okay, got you. Thank you. And I, I ask that because I, I can't make a policy decision based on a news story. I've, I've been the victim several times of a news story getting it wrong or twisting the facts or when I call policies crazy, you know, they think I'm calling people crazy the way it's worded. So I, I can't go on that, but I am concerned about, about that. You know, I'll follow up on that myself. The water crisis that's going out, that was spoken on this evening as well, that is, that is a county issue, what's going on. And I want to be careful about that being spoken in here as if the city is responsible for it. We have no jurisdiction over what's actually happening other than just applying social pressure to our colleagues and say, hey, you all have county residents that are having a water crisis. We invite folks to get on the city water. We do it well. We, we have our water stuff together. So I just, that, that is something that we want to, just make sure we clear up. And in regards to the Planning Commission, I just, and Councilmember Cook, I hear your comment as well. I just philosophically for me, at the end of the day, the Planning Commission is legislatively required to be on there. You can be a resident of any skill set. But I, I get what you're saying as well as far as, you know, just making sure we really take what they're saying. I, that's the first thing I do. I read their comments here because I want to make sure that I'm making an informed decision with as much data as possible. And then the decision that I come to is what I philosophically, you know, stand with in, in how I got to my decision that, you know, their comments play a role. But I don't, I don't believe in abdicating my responsibility to them. I just utilize the Planning Commission as well as other groups, organizations to help inform the ultimate decision that I'm legally required. Because once I make this decision, that is the legal record. And so I, I, it, I, I actually talked about this before. The Planning Commission make their comments and if it gets voted down, then the developers would, you know, make whatever adjustments and then they come to us. I was actually concerned with the way, the perception of it because folks are like, you guys are being bought, you know, by the developers. We're not being bought. It's just the case is progressively getting better. And when it gets to us, that's, that's their last opportunity to put everything out there. And if they don't, then, you know, it, it'll fail or it'll pass, you know, whatever the verdict may be. The concern I had about this was I just sort of wanted more. And I've, I've listened to both sides of the, of the perspective on this. I, you know, I look at this, it's right next to a school. And I think about Jordan High School and how everything is built up around Jordan High School. And it's residential, it's commercial, and it's a thriving community there. And I, listen, there will be more development down 98. It just will. But I, I looked at this as anything that's close to the school is an opportunity to really build like a village concept there. And, and I, I wanted more out of this project. So there is an interpretation of mixed use could be the area. There's an interpretation of mixed use could be the actual property itself. So if I'm looking at it objectively, what I have to work with, you know, I don't want to send a, a bad message. And the vote goes whatever way it goes. I don't want to send a message that, you know, you're in compliance and that doesn't have value. So I appreciate you all being in compliance. You know, you are in compliance with what, you know, the comp plan is stating here. Staff has given you all the AOK. Preferably, I want more out of it. Is that enough for me to say no? I, I have to, I have to look at this objectively and make my decision. But also I look at what's going on out there and I hear, you know, it's not walkable. It's not, you know, it's, I keep hearing walkable. Listen, I grew up in rural North Carolina. We didn't really walk a lot along the highway. But when they built sidewalks in town, we used those sidewalks. So I don't want to pretend that this is going to be an urban center or urban area without it being that. We have to be realistic. We can't deny something because it doesn't have what we ultimately will, you know, have or need. It'll be great to have, but I don't know many municipalities that build infrastructure or resources like this without it being there yet. Unless you're like, you know, Cary or something where you have the tax base to just build it and they'll come. So as of right now, you know, I think the density is the only thing that's going to be our leverage to get the things we ultimately will need. So with that being said, I will let the, let the dice fall where they roll. All right, I will. Get my glasses on. All right, are there any other comments, colleagues? Are there any other comments, colleagues?
Just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really do appreciate the, the depth of this conversation with my colleagues. I, I will want to say, one of the things that I want to thank the Planning Commission for, they, they've actually almost created a good cop, bad cop dynamic. I mean, some of these projects have gotten better, I think, precisely because of the voice of the Planning Commission. I don't think that's a bad thing, that when they, if, if, listen, if they look back and see that the Planning Commission said something, I think the fact that developers aren't ignoring the Planning Commission's comments are precisely because they see the sensitivity of this council to the Planning Commission. So, I, I mean, if they thought that we were ignoring them, they, they wouldn't be responsive to Planning Commission comments. So I, I've seen things get bad. And I think that, I don't think that's a bad thing, that the Planning Commission has created this dynamic where they're being taken seriously because they know when they get before this council, we're going to echo a lot of the same values that they've echoed. So, I mean, I hate for them to be bad cop, good cop, but I'm, but I'm grateful for the dynamic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I, thank, yeah, you're welcome. I do have a question for the developer real quick. And I, I could be just being selfish here, but Councilmember Riz sort of really resonated with me with his comments. I mean, is this something, is there more? I'm not writing, I'm not penning your project. Is there more? Is there anything else you can consider as far as?
Yeah, so, I mean, to be honest with you, hearing the discussion, I'm scratching my head a little bit throughout this evaluation from staff. I mean, keep in mind that this was filed before the comprehensive plan was adopted, before these policies were in place. And so, no, we acknowledge that, you know, those things were adopted since then, and we've tried to address them. But the indication from staff has been that this project is consistent with the placetime map. And I think, you know, the lack of affordable housing played a key role at Planning Commission as far as their recommendation. There were other recommendations. Walkability was one of them. We've, I mean, tried to address that as well. And I would say a minority of them, but some of them had mentioned that it should have a mix of uses, which is not necessarily the feedback that we got from staff. That is to say, it's not like staff said you don't need more uses, but, you know, I think we can acknowledge that it would be more consistent with the comprehensive plan with a mix of uses. But it wasn't something that we'd been working on. I, I think we would be interested in having a continuance to explore that option. I mean, I can't tell you that there will be a mix of use tonight. That's just not something we've looked at. But if, I mean, the, the commentary has been interesting. The project itself is good. What is being asked of is maybe more than what has been committed to. Well, we can't really add more without evaluating that, and we would need some time to do that. I, I really don't know what to tell you as far as what the client will think, which way that could go. But I can't add it tonight. I can tell you, there's, there's no amount of anything I could do to add that tonight. We'd have to start the process over anyway. If, if the project isn't approved on your vote tonight, that automatically puts a, a one-year cooling off period where nothing could be filed on this, which I think, you know, if, if the goal here is to kind of have the project that's been proposed plus some more uses, we're going to need some time to evaluate that. And obviously, if we add those uses, we'd have to go back through Planning Commission, which, I mean, sure, but I, I don't have a way to address this concern tonight. But I, client is happy to look into this if we have the time to do so.
Are you requesting more time?
If, if the council will grant it, absolutely. I mean, I want to be clear. The concern here that I'm hearing from council is that there isn't enough going on here, and that is in terms of uses. And I can say wholeheartedly, that is not something that we had evaluated through this project, primarily because it has been indicated, and it's in the staff report, I mean, the project is consistent with the placetime map. So, I mean, they know what they were trying to build. It was consistent with the placetime map. I'm not disputing that it would be more consistent with more uses, but I'm telling you, we never evaluated it that way. And we're happy to, if we can get more time.
Are you asking for a continuance?
Absolutely.
Point of clarification. I, I, Mr. Mayor, and if, I just want to say for me, for the record, I want to be clear, I'm in no way making any representation that my vote will in any way be connected or tethered to specific changes in its development plan. That is not my job. I'm not dictating to you anything like that. So I want you to know that my vote will be based upon what is before me at the moment. I am not in any way conditioning my vote or representing to you as a developer that if you do this, this, and that, my vote will be yes. I just want the record to reflect that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It's, it's your preference what you'd like to do. I, I've made it pretty clear. I'm, I'm taking an objective approach here. Selfishly, would want to see more, but the more that I want to see doesn't really have anything to do with you, you all individually. It's more so what comes around. But I don't think you can really control that yourself or, but I think that's on us as a, as a, as a city as well, with how we look at that area. But it's on, it's on you.
I mean, I guess I would ask a clarifying question for staff, you know, if, if we were, so the zoning that we've requested, as I understand it, really only allows for the residential use. If the, if the applicant wanted to add a different use, we'd have to amend our rezoning application. And then I would think we'd have to go back through Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Correct. That'd be a substantial change, which would revert it back to Planning Commission, and you would have to update all the documentation. And a new FIA, new UEA would be done with that.
And, and I think that's something that we would need the time to explore. I, I guess I could put it this way. If we can't really find another use, then, then at that point, I mean, I think you've heard what you've heard, we'd have to come back with, for a vote without any revisions to it. I don't, as far as like asking for a continuance, I'm not really sure the amount of time to ask for, because we'd have to go through a whole other process.
Okay, we, we can just take a vote. Yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess, or, we'll refer the item back to staff. I'm not really sure what to do in this scenario. I think the applicant is willing to take a look at the feedback we've heard as far as getting another use in there. But I can't tell you we could do that and be through the process within three months. I think the appropriate step would be to refer it back to staff so those things could happen. That would be my request.
Are you requesting a refer, refer back to staff?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues? Are you up or down? Down? Okay. Down. All right. All right. We are going to actually have to take a vote.
Okay.
All right. All right. So I would now entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Wake Olive Apartments into the city of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Redeeming Development Group LLC.
Moved and read.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Mayor, Madam Clerk, can you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The motion fails with Councilmember Mayor Williams and Mayor Pro Tem Middleton voting in support of the item.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll now move to number 28. Zoning map change, Trellis, Trellis, Durham, RTP.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy Lash, Planning Department. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Toby Coleman of Smith &amp; Anderson Law Group and on behalf of the client's Trellis, for one parcel of land totaling 23.103 acres and located at 201 Residence End Boulevard. Now, the current zoning is office and institutional with the graphic development plan. The applicant proposes to change this designation to office and institutional with the textual development plan. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow for the conversion of an existing extended stay hotel into 122 multifamily residential units. The properties are currently designated transit opportunity area and recreation and open space on the placetime map. The proposed zoning is generally consistent with the designated placetime of transit opportunity area and recreation open space. Thank you, staff. The applicant are here for any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff? All right. I will now declare this public hearing open. We have our applicant. How much time do you think you need?
About three minutes.
All right. Could you put five minutes on the clock, on the timer? Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of council. My name is Toby Coleman. I'm with the Smith &amp; Anderson Law Firm here on behalf of the owner of the property, Blue Ocean, who would also be the developer. In, in brief, let's see. This is a request to convert a, an existing 122-unit extended stay hotel located at 54 and 55, behind the Chick-fil-A there. That's how I know it, at least. And, and convert it to, for apartments. The, I'm going to go, I'm going to fly through this, so I may show some slides, but just out of an abundance of, I know that you guys spent a lot of time on the prior case, so I'm going to try to keep this relatively quick. If you have questions, feel free to stop me. This property is currently zoned O and I with a development plan. As you may know, O and I actually allows residential, multifamily residential uses by right. The only issue was when Blue Ocean went to start looking at this property in 2023 was whether the development plan, which is a 1988 development plan, whether that plan allowed multifamily residential. Back in 1988, the plan was to build hotels, so there was some references to hotel sites. But it wasn't like the development plans you see today where they're specific about the kinds of uses that are allowed or not allowed. There is, and so ultimately, we're here today because ultimately, staff determined that we needed to do a rezoning. The reason that you don't see some of the typical commitments that you might see otherwise, for instance, for affordable housing, is, is that the way we got here was a little bit convoluted. Long story short, Blue Ocean approached the city in 2023 through the sketch plan reviews process and basically asked the question of, do we need to rezone this property? And we got the response in writing from staff, no, you don't. You can do this without, without rezoning. Blue Ocean then proceeded to purchase the property. They took out, you know, spent millions of dollars, raised millions of dollars to do this, took out a loan, all in reliance on that. They went to go pull, pull the permits from the city, and at that point, they were informed, actually, you need to rezone. Staff's been great in, in that they've really helped facilitate a relatively quick process. We submitted this in January, and we're here before you today on April 15th, which may set a land speed record, at least for rezonings here in Durham. We have a couple of, we do have a couple of commitments. Again, we're providing that it will be used for multifamily uses. It will, we limit the number of units to 122, which allows for the conversion of the existing extended stay hotel rooms, all of which have a kitchen. There's a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And we provide that there'll be a dedication of some right-of-way along 54. Otherwise, we're available for questions, but did want to keep it relatively quick.
Thank you so much. And just for the record, extended stay means an extended sting of time, not the brand, right?
That's right. It's, it was a Residence End hotel prior to Blue Ocean purchasing.
Wanted to make that clarification for folks watching online. I believe you all, all resource, folks know, Toby Coleman?
That's me.
Okay. All right.
And then Evan Gallant is, is with Blue Ocean. He's here for questions.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to?
One other note, just, just to note, I know it's in your packet, but we did get a 10 to 0 recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. So did want to note that on this one.
Oh, you just want to drop that over? Just drop it over to Mike? Yeah, just let you guys know. Mic drop. Okay. Okay. Well, if there are no additional comments, then I will declare this public hearing closed and back before the council. Colleagues? Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I would just, just start by saying, I know it's late, and so I'll just push us along in this and just acknowledge. And I did have a conversation with Toby Coleman. And just noting the difference in the zoning, no zoning, and the finance situation is the only reason I'm like not hesitant on the affordable housing piece and the commitment. But I'm good with the, the way that it's set to move forward. So, that's all. Thank you.
I mean, this might be a question for staff, but I, I am a little concerned about how we got to this point, and I'm wondering if y'all can speak a little bit more. I mean, I, I heard what Mr. Coleman said about the plans being unclear, but it, it worries me that we kind of had to get to this situation, which I, and I'm not saying it's a bad project, but I, I do feel like our hands are tied a little bit. And, and I just want to make sure that that's not happening in the future and, and kind of just get a little clarity on that.
Sure. So this, as Mr. Coleman said, there was a pre-submitting meeting, I believe, with staff. Those are not meeting, those are meetings with line-level staff, not management staff. And this particular staff member read the development plan, just took it at face value and didn't dig in deeper. So when I found out about this, I look, I always look at 3512A in the ordinance, which stipulates what deviations that require a zoning map change are. So the planning department does not have administrative leeway. We have to follow the ordinance. And in there, it says a change to the use category if limitations on the number, range, or types of uses were proposed with the development plan and the governing body limited its consideration of uses to those. So that means that my homework assignment, when I get one of these, is to go back, I pull the staff report, I pull the minutes and go through and see, did the council at the time think that the only thing on the table was a hotel? And after I did that research, the answer was yes. And so, based on that, I have no leeway to allow them to do something that today's ordinance might allow, but back then, it was not. Does that help? Sort of, I know.
Yes. I mean, yes, it does. It's still, I, I'm still like, concerned about it, but I understand how it happened, but.
Right. And, and you know, that's, as with lots of things, it's a learning moment for staff. It's a coaching moment for staff. And it, it's one of those things that we, when we discover things like this, we do our best to get people through the process, to make it as painless as possible, and really work with them.
Okay. And, and Mr. Coleman, I have just a couple of questions for you. I know that you talked about that there weren't any commitments due to timing. There was some discussion, and I, I read through the material, sort of about this idea of a naturally occurring affordability. I, I understand the concept of this, but I, what I also, and I, first of all, sorry, I'm like bouncing all over the place, but what I would like to say is that I love a reuse. That is something that I totally can get behind. There is such a, it's, it is such a boon to us to not have to use extra resources to build. We've got something in place, a, an extended stay type situation already has the fundamental things needed for an apartment. It doesn't sound to me like the transition is going to be super, super difficult. So I'm wondering if there is space for commitments to be made in terms of affordability. Since you all have talked about it being sort of naturally occurring, are you all willing to proffer any actual income restrictions on those units?
The, at this point, the, the challenge is just simply that there is a, an existing mortgage on the property and a, a proffer that would limit the, the rental rates would, would be, could be considered a material default of, of the, of the loan. And so that's the concern that my client has. Again, on, on the screen is, are the projected rents, which show that the projected rents are at or, or at, are below the 80% AMI for the area. And.
I don't, I don't have anything on my screen. I'm happy to pull it up, but I don't have anything on my screen. Just, sorry for your information.
I don't know what's, oh, there we go. All right. So these are the projected rents for the project, which are at or below 80% AMI. And the reason that, that Blue Ocean, and Blue Ocean's done about six of these? Seven. Across the country. And you can see on the screen, again, that this has been the consistent experience across the country, is, is that the rents are at or below about 80% AMI. The reason is, is because these are basically classified. The reason is, is because these are basically Class B apartments, right? You're not building new apartments, and so they're small, they're slightly smaller, and they've got sort of a ceiling in terms of what they can rent them for. And as a result, what they end up is, is sort of a missing middle sort of product. They call it attainable housing, but it ends up being a form of affordable housing at about 80%. But to answer your question specifically, again, you know, we did take a look at that, and the issue is frankly just that because there isn't existing, you know, typically when we go through, when you go through a rezoning, you're talking to developers who have not yet purchased the property, there's not currently, there's not financing in place where, you know, a material change or your obligations would somehow impact the loan. Because of the unique circumstances here, there's already a loan in place, and not because Blue Ocean was trying to get out ahead of anything, but because, just because of, you know, the way things happen here.
That's interesting about the loan. I'm also wondering, though, we hear commitments in other realms as well, and I noticed that there's no school impact proffer. Is that something that y'all would be willing to consider at this time?
At this point, I think the reason that, what we've discussed is, is the reason that we haven't offered the proffer in this case is because while the staff estimate is, is there'd be an increase in the number of students. The reality is, is that, two things. Number one, the current residents can currently send their kids to the area schools. So to the extent that there are kids living there now, there's probably not much of an impact. The other part is, is that in Blue Ocean's experience, a lot of what this product is really attractive to are people coming out of college, younger folks, and so they don't have as many, when they've looked at their rent rolls, they really don't have very many kids that live at these facilities. So based on that, we have not made that proffer.
On the first thing you said, I thought that the Residence Inn was no longer being utilized, but there are people there that you potentially will be renting to?
I'll let Evan Gallant speak.
Sorry, just to clarify, Evan Gallant, I'm with Blue Ocean, the developer. So it's still operating as an Extended Stay, which is a category, as opposed to the brand Extended Stay America. Extended Stay just being kitchens, typically, living rooms built for elongated stays. It is deflagged, so Marriott did not own the property, it was privately owned, they just had their brand on the door. That was removed when we bought the property, in the purpose being that we were going to be pulling permits and moving forward. It currently has a Trellis brand on the property, but it's still operating as an Extended Stay for folks like traveling nurses. We had some graduating parents that were coming in town over the last few months, staying for the weekend. But to Toby's point, federal law allows for children that are living at Extended Stays to be able to place in the local schools. So I personally spoke to Pearson Town Elementary, spoke to their administrative offices. If a child is living there today, as long as the parent could prove or guardian could prove residency with a contract, their child could go to that school. So there's an impact naturally, and to Toby's point also, we have close to 1,000 units in this Trellis platform, two children total. It's just the units are so small, it doesn't really typically function well for a parent. I have two little children, I would never live in this kind of 500, 400 square foot space, just a practical reality.
I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Councilmember Vigoferro.
Yeah, thank you. I spoke with the developer, I don't know when, I spoke with them, maybe a week and a half ago. I'm just saying, you know, I understand the financing kind of piece of it. I hope that this is actually an opportunity, you know, we talked about this during our meeting, that there are opportunities across Durham, and so as we move forward, even, you know, other communities, other governments have helped buy hotels, have helped buy these types of purchases, or types of properties for transitional housing, and so I hope that y'all will think to partner with us, because you have a successful track record of basically turning these over from their original use. So I will be supporting this, but also hoping that there's other opportunities, because we know that extended, there's plenty of similarly aged Extended Stays across Durham.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the Planning Commission got this one right. I look forward to supporting this project. I think it's an appropriate and organic use of an already existing structure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Cook?
Just want to say one more thing, which is that for those of you who aren't familiar with my work, I do eviction defense, and so I work with people who are housing insecure all day, every day. I have an active caseload of 90 people, that's 90 households, right, so loads more human beings than that, and I have had repeat clients. My non-repeat number is close to 300 people that I've worked with over the past few years. I do want to make note that places, Extended Stays particularly, are a place that unsheltered people do go. I know that it, and I'm supporting this project, I want to be clear, I know that that is, it is a great reuse, but I just want to also note that we have a lot, a lot of Durham residents that make use of hotels and Extended Stays as their primary residences with children, many, many families of six or more children in single 500-square-foot places. This is, this is a reality of the city where we live, and so I just want to, I just want to point that out, that this is not a great solution, because people who end up in hotels have a really difficult time getting out, because the costs are so high, they are unable to save up money in order to rent in any other place. But at this point, with our current system, it is a really, really vital part of our ecosystem that keeps people off the street, so I just wanted to make that note.
Councilmember Freeman?
To that point, I just want to make sure that you do, I just want to put in front of you that maybe some conversations with Housing for New Hope for maybe a couple of units, I know we're not talking about commitments, but I would like to hear you say that you know who Housing for New Hope is and what they do in our community. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. It's nothing like a permanent pillow, and I appreciate that security that we'll be providing. I also want to be sensitive to Councilmember Cook's point. I've had employees that lived in hotels. I've had students and their families who lived in hotels, and I, we have a lot of issues, and I just appreciate anyone who's working on both sides that are trying to help us get to that point. This will be a good conversion. I mean, we, I think the first one was the Duke Tower condominiums in downtown Durham was the first conversion of an Extended Stay type hotel to now permanent residency. But yeah, I was eight years old when this was built, so now it's going to be permanent housing, so, for someone. All right, thank you. Colleagues, are there any more comments? All right, I will entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of office and institutional with a graphic development plan, Falls Jordan District B Major Transportation Corridor I-40, and establishing the same as office and institutional with a textural development plan, Falls Jordan District B Major Transportation Corridor I-40.
So moved.
Moved and properly seconded. I feel like I'm having glitches in the matrix. It's late. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Thank you, please close the vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
All right, and motion two, to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D 605.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close.
And the motion passes 7-0.
Thank you all. All right. Item 29.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Mayor Pro Tem and City Councilmembers Reginald Johnson, Director of the Community Development Department. I'm joined by Maggie Carnegie, who serves as our Planning and Performance Manager, and also Ms. Kim and Ms. Monica are sign language interpreters. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen comments on the draft FY2024-25 Annual Action Plan. The Annual Action Plan specifies how the City of Durham will address housing and community development needs through the use of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Program, Consortium Funds, Emergency Solutions Grants, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPWOR funds. The Draft 2024-25 Annual Action Plan was made available for public review from March 13th, 2024, through April 15th, 2024. Notice of this meeting was properly advertised in the Herald Sun and Cape Passage newspapers, distributed via the Department's General List serve, as well as posted on the Community Development Department's webpage and the City of Durham's website. As recipient of CDBG, Home, ESG, and HOPWOR funds, the city is required to hold at least two public hearings prior to the submission of the Annual Action Plan. The first public needs hearing was held on December 18th, 2023. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has not yet notified the city of the final entitlement amounts for FY2024-25. For planning purposes, the city expects to receive approximately $2,030,000 in CDBG, $1,300,000 in home consortium funds, $180,000 in ESG, and $1,060,000 in HOPWOR funds. In closing, a summary of the comments of this public hearing and written comments will receive from citizens during the development of the Annual Action Plan will be incorporated into the final draft before submission to HUD. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Johnson. This is a public hearing. I'm sorry, colleagues, are there any questions for Director Johnson? All right, at this point, I would declare the public hearing open, and I do have two signups here. Haley Cunningham. And after Haley, I have Linnea. You can come on up right after her. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Haley Cunningham. I'm an Infectious Diseases Fellow dedicating my career to improving HIV prevention and treatment in Durham and the surrounding counties. I've cared for many people living and thriving with HIV. With one daily pill or an injection every two months, people can live long, healthy, normal lives with HIV, and yet many people are still becoming sick or dying of AIDS. I'm here today because I have seen too many young people, people my age or younger, die of AIDS. This is not acceptable when we have effective, affordable treatment options. From my personal experience caring for patients with HIV, the greatest obstacles preventing people from accessing treatment are stigma, housing insecurity, and lack of reliable transportation. Stigma is what keeps people from getting HIV testing because they don't want to know. Stigma prevents people from seeking treatment because the diagnosis is too difficult to accept, and it isolates people living with HIV who are often shunned by friends and family. Stigma will take years, if not decades, to stamp out, but we have the opportunity to make tangible change right now by expanding access to housing and transportation. Many of my patients living with HIV want to come to clinic appointments but are not able to because they do not have reliable transportation. Others do not have the energy to think about getting to clinic visits because they're worried about where they'll sleep tonight, or they're working two to three jobs to pay for rent and don't have time to take off to come to clinic. Medical appointments and labs are an important part of HIV care. Just like with any other medication, we can't prescribe HIV medications indefinitely without monitoring for side effects or to make sure that it's being taken as prescribed. As a member of the Coalition to End the HIV Epidemic in Durham, I stand with many dedicated individuals and organizations who have been supporting people living with HIV for much longer than I have been supporting myself. I stand with CARE, Transitional Housing Organizations, the Durham County Department of Public Health, Lincoln Community Health Center, and others committed to ending the HIV epidemic. Our coalition aims to form a comprehensive collaborative system to offer greater support for housing, transportation, and other basic services. I strongly believe that by helping people, that by us helping our community members living with HIV, it will empower them to take care of their health. I humbly ask the City of Durham to make housing and supportive services for people living with HIV a priority in the Annual Action Plan, Consolidated Plan, and Affordable Housing Plan. I ask that the Coalition to End HIV Epidemic in Durham receives $1 million to utilize to create this coordinative system to foster a healthier community.
Thank you so much. Welcome, you have three minutes. And let me just say, I've enjoyed you all sitting right there in the middle of the room and the smiles and energy that you all have provided us tonight, and I also thought you all were high school students, and you said doctor.
Enough people around here that know I'm not a high school student anymore.
Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Linnea Foster. It's nice to be back in front of the City Council again. Greetings, Council and staff. I'm here on behalf of the Coalition to End the HIV Epidemic in Durham, and we want to invite you to join us in creating a comprehensive system of care to end HIV. In 2022, Durham County ranked number four among all North Carolina counties for the number of people living with HIV, 1,906 people to be exact, and a number of people living with AIDS, 812. Racial and ethnic disparities and migrant minorities bear a disproportionate burden with rates of HIV positivity per 100,000 people reaching 1,272 among Black, African-Americans, and 640 Hispanic-Latinx community members, compared with 211 among white residents. While there is no cure, no cure for HIV, if diagnosed and treated early, people can live long and healthy, normal lives with HIV by taking just one pill a day. Treatment is so effective that most people's HIV will become undetectable and therefore cannot be transmitted to others so long as they continue the medication. Despite this, many Durham residents living with HIV are not given appropriate treatment due to numerous barriers obstructing engagement in HIV care and medication adherence, including discrimination, stigma, lack of transportation, and affordable housing. Being homeless at the time of HIV diagnosis is associated with a 27-fold higher odds of death compared to those with stable housing. The odds of being virally suppressed decrease by 11% for every 10 nights spent on the street during the prior six months. Established organizations and committed individuals have been working in silos to provide services for people living in HIV, with HIV in Durham, but are limited by the lack of dedicated funding and means to effectively communicate and collaborate. In response, we have formed the Coalition to End HIV in Durham with support from the following: Healing with Care, ACRRA, the Lincoln Community Health Center, the Durham County Health Social Services Health Department, and the Duke HIV Clinic. We ask that the council and the Coalition to end, to fund the Coalition to End HIV Epidemic in Durham, we propose an innovative coordinated permanent supportive housing and integrated health service and data surveillance. Our goals include expanding housing access to successfully transition 80% of participants to permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just want to acknowledge all the people that are here with us. Thank you.
Yes, say their names.
Morrell Turner. Kathy Lookdair.
Thank you all for being here. All right, this is a public hearing. Are there any other comments? All right, at this time, I would declare this public hearing closed and back before the council. Colleagues? Thank you all so much, and just, this is such important work. And any way that I, as your mayor, can be supportive on behalf of the council, please reach out. Right. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, one second. I read all of these? All of these are different motions? Oh, okay. And do I have to do them one by one, or can I do?
Yeah, I think last year we went through one.
Okay, I'll do that. All right, I'll entertain a motion to conduct a public hearing. We're doing that now. All right. To adopt the draft fiscal year 2024-2025 action, annual action plan upon closure of this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll also entertain a motion to adopt the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, fiscal year 2024-2025, grant project ordinance in the amount of 2.130,000 dollars in authorization to execute grant agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. And also to adopt, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Home Investment Partnerships Program, Home, fiscal year 2024-2025, grant project ordinance in the amount of 1.4 million and authorization to execute grant agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. I'll also entertain a motion to adopt the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, ESG, fiscal year 2024-2025, grant project ordinance in the amount of 180,000 and authorization to execute grant agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll adopt, I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program, HOPWA, fiscal year 2024-2025, grant project ordinance in the amount of 1,600,000 dollars in authorization to execute grant agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you so much. All right, and last item on the agenda tonight, number 30.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem.
One moment, one moment. All set. Ready to go.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of City Council, Reginald Johnson, Director of the Community Development Department for the City of Durham. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen comments on the proposed substantial amendments to the FY 2017-2018, FY 2018-2019, FY 2019-2020, FY 2020-2021, FY 2021-2022, and FY 2022-2023 annual action plans. These proposed substantial amendments are available for public review from March 22nd, 2024, to April 21st, 2024. The citizen participation plan contained in the adopted 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan requires that a public hearing be conducted for formal amendments that add, delete, or substantially change the Consolidated Plan or Annual Action Plan. The proposed amendments make changes to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG-funded projects that were completed or closed and have remaining available funding, as well as allocates available CDBG entitlement funding that was not accounted for in previous annual action plans to eligible projects. Also, the proposed amendments add Granville County to Durham Eligible Metropolitan Statistical Area, EMSA, for the 2021-2022 HOPWA program year. Notice of this meeting was properly advertised in the Herald Sun and Cape Passage newspapers distributed via the Department's General List serve, as well as posted in the community, on the Community Development Department's webpage and the City of Durham website. In closing, a summary of comments from this public hearing and written comments received from citizens concerning the proposed amendments will be incorporated into the final document. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reginald, good evening. Good to see you. Just, just an educational question. Add Granville County, I've been voting on a lot of these each year. I don't ever recall seeing something, what does that mean? And it's for 2020, what does that mean?
So what that means is we are entitlement jurisdiction, as I just shared, and we receive all four federal programs. One of the programs, HOPWA, by federal statute, goes beyond the city limits of Durham in our instance. And so we have through two other counties, we have Orange County and Person County, that we have to service. Normally, we don't go outside the city limits, but for this federal program, it requires us to go outside the city limits to other counties to serve. What we have to do is when there are changes in the EMSA, is recognize those, and in this instance, Granville was assigned to us. And so our funding also includes going to Granville County, residents that need to be served with HOPWA funds in that county as well.
Got you. I remember Orange in the other one, I just, I never remembered Granville, but that's a good thing.
No, this is a change, this is a change, and we were assigned Granville County.
Got you, got you. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, at this time, I will declare this public hearing open. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. However, it is a public hearing if there is anyone that would like to share a comment. All right, thank you. At this time, I will declare this public hearing closed and back before the council. Again, colleagues, are there any comments? All right. Yes.
I just want to thank Mr. Johnson for his incredible work leading this department. So thanks for this, for organizing the hearing and just being our leader on these housing issues. So thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you. This is a great use of these funds, federal funds. All right, I'll now entertain motions. The first, to conduct a public hearing on April 15th, 2024, to receive citizen, no, I just said that. All right, I'm still going to sound like an auctioneer here. To approve the, I'll entertain a motion to approve the draft proposed substantial amendments to the fiscal year 2017-2018, fiscal year 2018-2019, fiscal year 2019-2020, fiscal year 2020-2021, fiscal year 2021-2022, fiscal year 2022-2023 Annual Action Plans, AAPS, for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the poll. Please close.
Motion passes 7-0.
Awesome. All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute all administrative requirements and contractual documents for the implementation of the amended fiscal year 2017-2018, fiscal year 2018-2019, fiscal year 2019-2020, fiscal year 2020-2021, fiscal year 2021-2022, fiscal year 2022-2023 Annual Action Plans, AAPS, to reallocate funding to accurately reflect how the City of Durham utilizes federal CDBG award allegations and CDBG program income for projects, activities that have been completed, currently in progress, and are planned using the applicable funding, applicable funding year allocations.
So moved.
Second.
Community Development Block Grant. Community Development Block Grant.
CDBG, Community Development Block Grants. All right, Madam Clerk, please open the poll. Please close.
Motion passes unanimously.
And to our sign language interpreters, I will not do that again. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry about that. Oh, man. Last one. I'll entertain a motion to add Granville County to the Durham Eligible Metropolitan Statistical Area, EMSA, for the fiscal year 2021-2022, HOPWA award for eligible persons to receive services and funding from the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS HOPWA program.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The item passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. And to our interpreter, do I need to repeat that second one for interpretation, or am I okay? Okay, thank you. All right, other matters, colleagues? All right, thank you, Chelsea. No. All right, we will adjourn at 11 o'clock on the dot. Thank you.